Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn and I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask all my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones, electronic devices at this time. I'd also like to ask everyone here, my colleagues and the public, to be respectful of each other. Do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, we will ask that you leave. And if you fail to comply, you might be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Role call, Mr. Clerk. Will you please call the role to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor O'Whirra. President. Counselor Baker. Here. Counselor Black. Present.
Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lara. Counselor Luzien.
Present.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
And Counselor Worrell. A quorum is present. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present today's introduction of the clergy. I'd like to ask City Councilor Black to please come up, introduce our clergy for today's meeting. Counselor Black.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. It's my pleasure today to introduce Pastor Jamie from Tremont Temple Baptist Church. We actually, the council recently had an item on our docket to make Tremont Temple a landmark. So it's now a landmark in the city of Boston, a recognition that's long overdue. It's a Baptist congregation that's existed since the 19th century and has a very famous building. It's been host to many, many great speakers over the years and also just a vibrant congregation for well north of a century now. And I think it's also perhaps on the docket for Community Preservation Act funding. So really like one of those kind of treasures of the city architecturally, but also spiritually. And so we're very grateful to have Pastor Jamie here with us. The church affiliated with American Baptist, the American Baptist Church and also the Southern Baptist Church actually hosts Send Relief in its building, an organization that works with refugees and on human trafficking issues. And the congregation itself is an important part of the local religious tapestry. So Pastor Jamie, he's been at the church for eight years. Before that was serving down in Providence, before that in DC. Did a Masters of Theology with a focus on preaching from the Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. And in addition to ministering to his congregation, also cares for his family, his wife Adriana. And they have four children, Mercy, Audrey, Jack, and Noah. So I was reaching just over the line into Counselor Flynn's district for this clergy invitation. But I just thought that in this season of acknowledging Tremont Temple and its importance in the history of the city, we would love to welcome Pastor Jamie to the roster room. Thank you.
Well, it's an honor to open up in prayer and special thank you to Counselor Black for inviting me here. Let's bow our heads and pray. Father in heaven, you are a great God, the living God, the only God. You are righteous and just, and yet you abound in steadfast love and faithfulness. You are the Creator and sustainer of the galaxies, majestic in holiness, transcendence, and set apart from your creation, and yet in compassion you have moved to redeem this fallen world. As the Creator, you are a creation's judge, the one to whom everyone must give an account. And yet you are a tender father towards those who trust in you. Oh Lord, I approach your throne of grace in prayer to ask for wisdom to govern in these times of trial. You know that we are in desperate times as a nation and a city. In your word, the psalmist asks, "If the foundations are destroyed, what shall the righteous do?" Surely wisdom calls us to look to you, to the sovereign Lord. And you have declared in your word that the times are in your hands. I pray that this council will boldly and courageously face an unknown future, both in their personal lives and as city councillors, drawing confidence not in their own virtue and abilities or in their own grit and resolve, but in your power and your love. I pray for the vulnerable of our city, for the homeless, for many of our veterans, for those caught up in sex trafficking and the drug trade. I pray for victims of violence and for their families, for children who are at risk of harm and abuse, and for so many others. And I also pray for the first responders, for the medical staff, for the shelters and churches throughout this city, and for so many others who render care. Oh Lord, you are a God who is near to the brokenhearted, a God who saves the crushed in spirit. I pray that you would be near to them to provide, protect, and comfort them. I pray particularly that the work of this council would be a display of your own compassion and care for the least of these. May these council members burn with passion to see the hurting healed and the wounded made whole. May they love justice and mercy and display it in their efforts to alleviate suffering in the city of Boston. I pray also that each member of the council would be marked by integrity, by a disinterestedness that lends to the care of others, that the flourishing of this great city and all who move within it would be their greatest concern, so that justice would roll down like waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. I pray that you would guard each councillor from desires and temptations for dishonest gain, give each one an aversion to corruption, cause them to be the same people in the darkness as in the light of this chamber, that the reputation of this council and this city will gleam for many years to come. I pray also that collectively, as the legislative body over this city, that their use of authority, though it will not be perfect, will reflect your very own. I pray now for the city of Boston in the words of your departed servant, King David. "When one rules justly over men, ruling in the fear of God, he dawns on them like the morning light, like the sun shining forth on a cloudless morning, like rain that makes grass to sprout from the earth." I pray that under the guidance of this council, the city of Boston, its institutions, its residents, and all who pass the time in her streets will flourish like well-watered fields. And finally, I pray that your love supremely displayed in the sin-bearing death of Jesus Christ in his glorious resurrection would be known and trusted among the members of this council. Thank you for sending your son to bear in his own body the guilt for sin for all those who trust in you. Oh Lord, grant to this council blessings and joy as they serve us, and may your name be glorified among the members of this body. I pray this all in the strong name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Mr. Clerk, can you ensure the record is reflected to include Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Lara? Yeah. We do have several presentations. We're going to ask various city councils to come forward. I believe we have four of them, but at this time, I would ask Counselor Erin Murphy to come forward to the podium, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. And as you see, we have many members of the Licensing Board and other workers. Is Peter's wife here? Could I ask, oh, could you, would you like to come up? No? Or does somebody want to come up with her, maybe? Whatever. Thank you, Diana. So as many of you probably know, there was Diana's husband passed away suddenly. And so many of her coworkers are here. And we wanted to take a moment here on the City Council floor to just acknowledge you and how wonderful your husband was. So Kwakwawang, better known to many of us here in this chamber as Peter, was a joy to his wife Diana. Coworkers, who we see many here in the chamber today in the city of Boston. Peter moved from Hong Kong, his birthplace, to Boston in 1980, where he attended Elliott Elementary School, followed by Boston Tech. By 18, he began his first job as a youth councillor with Boston Asian Youth Essential Services. There, he served as a mentor and a guide for many children in the city. After that, Peter took up yet another job with a focus on helping people, this time in City Hall. Peter began as an administrative clerk for the Department of the Licensing Board and moved his way up in position during his time spent there. He was always there to help his colleagues, whether it was assisting in an administrative task or simply cheering them up. As for his constituents, he was kind, patient, and always willing to help anyone who needed assistance. He and his wife Diane were inseparable. She loved his home, cooked meals, and getting to travel the world with him. This year would have been their 25th wedding anniversary. The spirit of Kwak Peter will live on in City Hall and in the city of Boston for years to come. He was a blessing to his wife, his coworkers, constituents, and anyone who ever had the privilege of meeting him. So would you like to say something? Counselor Baker?
I just want to say on behalf of the City Council and the city, Diane, sorry for your loss and the loss in the city, the Licensing Department, everybody that knew and loved Peter. Thank him for his service. And this is just a small thing and one of the things that we can do, just to show you support and let you know that we're here with you, your city fam, Peter's city family here, and want to just make sure that you feel supported and make sure that you're okay. And that's about it. Thank you. And we have, we had a resolution that was part of Peter's, Peter's service also. They came from the City Council. And there's no words that we have that can, that can make it okay. But as long as we can, can send a collective prayer for Peter, that he's, he's in a better place now. That's what we believe, and that's, that's difficult to, for you to believe now, but hopefully you can. And time will, time does heal wounds. So thank you and sorry for your loss.
You're welcome to say something if you want. We'll just go back.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Licensing, for coming out and supporting us and supporting Peter and Diana.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Thank you to the Licensing team for being here as well. At this time, I would ask Counselor Lara to come forward for another presentation. Counselor Lara? And, and Mr. Clerk, can we ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Worrell is present? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Lara?
Thank you so much, President Flynn, and thank you to Counselor Murphy and Counselor Baker for that beautiful presentation. Our office sends its condolences to Peter's family. I am here today and really honored to be starting Women's History Month by celebrating a trailblazing woman whose leadership and impact withstand the test of time. Today, I have Matthew White, Helen Walsh, and Connor White on behalf of Ms. Carol White to receive this citation. Ms. Carol White has been a noted community member and a real estate broker in West Roxbury for over 40 years and has just crossed the amazing milestone of turning 90 years old this year. Mrs. White is one of the first pioneers of women in real estate field and starting Carol White and Associates Real Estate as one of our city's first women-owned real estate companies right in her kitchen. She has been servicing the communities in and around West Roxbury for decades and was named 2019's number one brokerage firm in Boston. Carol White is a name that is synonymous with real estate in West Roxbury and Rosendale. In her many years in the field, she has mentored many of her current real estate brokers in West Roxbury who started their journey with her. A clear testament of her mentorship is the success of the women that she's paved the way for. It's safe to say that in the landscape of West Roxbury would look very, very different if it not for Carol. Her ties with city government also run pretty deep. Carol is the sister-in-law of former mayor Kevin White. He was quoted saying this about Carol. "Just as she is a wonderful community advocate, she is a wonderful business person. I cannot say enough about her." Carol is very proud of her five children, Brendan, Deirdre, Sarah, Matthew, and the late Timothy, as well as her grandchildren Brendan Taylor, Mickey, and Connor. Her passion, love, and kindness have been known over many generations in West Roxbury. And I'm honored to present this official City Council citation for Ms. Carol White.
Thank you very much, Counsel Lara. I also want to mention BJ, who was very, very helpful in, you know, getting this off the ground with Counsel Lara's office. Thank you to the Boston City Council, Council President. You know, when I was coming in here this morning, I happened to see my grandfather Joseph C. White, who was the council president in 1954 as well. So I snapped a nice picture of that. But I'm here on behalf of my family, Helen, Connor, my brother Brendan, sister Deirdre, other sister Sarah, my late brother Timothy, and of course, my mother Carol White, who was an institution in the West Roxbury, in greater West Roxbury area, in Boston area. I'm very proud of her. The family's very proud of her for all of her accomplishments and what she's done for us as a family and for her kids. So she just celebrated her 90th birthday recently in early January. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. So I could go on and on, but I'm very, very grateful, Counsel Lara, and to everybody, to express just my gratitude for the city of Boston and for, for my mom on behalf of everybody. She's a beautiful person. She's watching this now. She couldn't come here herself, but we have the citation in hand and another beautiful event for her. So thank you very much, everybody.
Could my colleagues please come up for a group photo?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. For everything I absolutely...
No, thank you. Welcome. Welcome back. Good seeing you, all right?
Thank you so much for being here. And I like your outfit. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you. Thank you. It was good seeing you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have two more presentations left. At this time, let me ask City Councilor Tanya Fernandez Anderson to please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I would like to honor Dr. Will Flavell. Is Dr. Will Flavell, where, where do you go? If you can please join me here, please? Dr. Will Flavell is an Indigenous educated politician scholar and social justice advocate from Auckland, New Zeal, New Zealand. As the first ever Maori member to be elected to the Auckland Council in 2013, serving the Henderson, Messy, thank you, area of 130,000 constituents, and we're complaining, right? He has been a strong advocate for the Maori community, emphasizing and ensuring the community's viewpoints are actively involved in the decision-making and resourcing of Maori arts, culture, and history to be more visible in public spaces. With a background in secondary school education, he has a passion for helping young people find their place in the world while supporting their aspirations. He is currently a Fulbright scholar, working with Indigenous young people of Massachusetts as part of his fellowship and will return to New Zealand in April. Please help me honor today Dr. Will Flavell.
Kea akunui, kea akurahi, e te tēi te tā, inga kaitaki takitaki o tēnei takiwāa, Massachusetts. Mehearoa atu kiakoto, e pūpuri tonu ana ki te mana o tēnei fenua. E te kōrumatua, Boston, a Meahuu te nākoe, kahuri okumehi maioha kīnga kaikonehera te nākoto. Firstly, I acknowledge the Indigenous guardians of this land, their traditions, culture, and languages. I acknowledge Mayor Wu, Chairman Flynn, and Counselor Anderson for the invitation and the councillors here in the chambers this afternoon. My name is Dr. Will Flavell. I'm an Indigenous educator, social advocate, researcher, and local Auckland City politician. My tribes are Ngapui, Ngati Fatua, Taunui, and Ngati Maniapoto. I'm here in Boston for a short time, representing my Indigenous communities, my home of West Auckland and my country, Aotearoa, New Zealand. The last month has been difficult for people back home in New Zealand. Flooding has caused widespread devastation impacting the daily lives of many families and communities. As a result, people have died. Climate change is real and needs immediate resourcing to counterattack the effects of such devastation. This is important as New Zealand is an island nation with many coastal towns and communities. I'm here in Boston because I received a Fulbright Scholar Award for four months to understand the schooling experiences of Indigenous young people in Massachusetts and whether they can see their culture, language, and identity feature in their schooling experiences. Interviewing young people in school visits will give me a greater understanding of Indigenous schooling experiences. As Maori, Indigenous people of Aotearoa, New Zealand, it's our obligation that we support Indigenous communities around the world. We have faced similar histories. We're slowly improving things back home. This year, teaching New Zealand history, including local Indigenous stories, is now a core compulsory component of the New Zealand education system. This will provide a more inclusive insight into all our histories, good and bad, to children back home. People must know the past in order to understand the present and to face the future. Last year, we celebrated a new public holiday, Mata Riki, the cluster of pleiadi stars that signals the Maori New Year. It is an important time for the year for us to honor our ancestors, celebrate the present by giving thanks, and plan for the year ahead. What is particularly special about this public holiday is that each year is a different day depending on the changing lunar calendar system. I was first elected to Auckland Council in 2013. For the last year, 10 years, I have straddled the life of a local politician with my role as an educator. During that time, we have seen the renaming of 100 parks, reserves, and community centers with Maori names. This is in partnership with our local tribes. They are resourced to gift the community meaningful names that tell their local stories. We now have announcements on our public transport systems, both trains and buses, in the Maori language. This ensures that we increase the visibility of the language as a community language that is seen, heard, read, and felt. Diversity only exists when the voices of Indigenous communities are heard. There has been success in supporting our people's dreams and aspirations. This came with struggle, protests, marches, gatherings, and petitions. We still have a lot of work to do. Being at the decision-making table means ensuring that our decisions today will make it easier for the next generation. Sometimes those decisions can be difficult, but it is, it is necessary. It has to be like that. I'll finish today with a Maori proverb. Mate kimi kakite, mate kite ka mohio, mate mohio ka marama. Seek and discover. Discover and know. Know and become enlightened. Nō reira, huri noi te farinai, te nākoto, te nākoto, te nākoto katua. Thank you very much.
The final presentation we have is by City Councilor Brian Worrell. Counselor Worrell, will you please come to the podium? are invaluable to our communities as they work to protect lives, heal wounds, and build resilient communities. I would love Pace and his team to come up so I could present them with its citation.
Deep appreciation, everybody, for this, this acknowledgement of the Lewis D. Brown Peace Institute and those that we work in partnership with. Many of those partnerships come from direct endorsement and funding and support from this council. So with that, I share deep gratitude on behalf of Lewis D. Brown Peace Institute and thankful for the partnership with Mass General Hospital, Emerson College, to, in an effort to transform the narrative of gun violence. And the way that we do that is we uplift the narratives of survivors, those that are closest to the pain, being closest to the power, and closest to that narrative. And the Lewis D. Brown Peace Institute is a place, it's a center of healing, teaching, and learning for those impacted by homicide and gun violence, and it is a space where that narrative is encouraged and welcomed. And we look forward to continue working with partners, both at City Hall and across the city and across the state, to make more spaces conducive to the stories and the narratives of survivors of homicide victims. And this is a beautiful first step, working with Emerson College. So again, echoing Council Wrell's invitation to watch the short documentary film, Quiet Rooms, it's 20 minutes long, and if you've checked your, your mailbox, I left a flyer there that has a QR code to make it really easy for you. It's a 20-minute film uplifting survivor voices in this city, your constituents, and bringing their narrative to this building has been a really privilege, a great privilege today, so thank you for this acknowledgement.
Can my colleagues come forward for a photo, please? The First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes, seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the many minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her run of the mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0445, please?
Document number 0445, message disapproving a petition for a special law regarding an act relative to the reorganization of the Boston School Committee, amending Chapter 108 of the Acts of 1991. Document number 0135, passed by the City Council February 15, 2023.
Thank you. This docket will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, the next docket, 0446, 0447, please?
Document number 0446, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation for the Public Health Commission for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $50,850 to cover the fiscal year 23. Cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Public Health Commission and SEIU Local 888 Coordinators Assistant Coordinators Unit. The terms of the contracts include base wage increases of 2% in October 2020, 1.5% in October 21, and 2% in October 2022. Document number 0447, message in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $50,850 to provide funding for the Public Health Commission for the fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Public Health Commission and SEIU Local 888 Coordinator Assistant Coordinators Unit.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bark, the Chair of the Committee, City Services, Innovation Technology. Counsel Bark, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Seeing as this is just a $50,000 appropriation, I am going to ask for suspension and passage of these two dockets today. As is mentioned in the docket, it's for the Coordinators and Assistant Coordinators Unit at BPHC. It's comprised of about 85 supervisory employees who work in the Homeless Services Bureau and in residential programs in the Bureau of Recovery Services. This docket, it's, it's sort of part of the old wage pattern, so it's the, October 22 is the 2%, then 1.5%, then 2%. However, it also makes a change to the wage scales for the unit, so it's going to eliminate the current lowest step and add a new step that is 2% higher than the current top step, which increases both the starting and maximum salaries for bargaining unit positions. It also formally adds Juneteenth as a recognized holiday, as we've been doing, clarifies existing annual influenza, influenza vaccination requirement to improve administrative efficiency, and it replaced obsolete case management titles and job descriptions with updated titles and descriptions that better align with the mission of the Homeless Services Bureau and the specific functions of the positions. So yeah, it's 85 employees over at BPHC. Obviously, they're represented by SEIU 888, as are many workers throughout the city, and looking to get this ratified today. So, Mr. President, with my colleagues' consent, I would love to suspend and pass both dockets, 0446 and 0447.
Thank you, Counsel Bark. We'll do each one individually. Counsel Bark seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0446. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Roll call vote on docket 0446, Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bark?
Yes.
Counselor Bark, yes. Counsel Brayden?
Yes.
Counsel Brayden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Laura?
Yes.
Counsel Laura, yes. Counsel Lou Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Lou Jean, yes. Counsel Mehea? Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Wrell?
Yes.
Counsel Wrell, yes. Document number 0446 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has passed. Counsel Bark seeks, seeks suspension of the rules, passage of docket 0447. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. The ayes have it.
Doctor Lo.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket 0447, Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bark?
Aye.
Counsel Bark, aye. Counsel Brayden?
Yes.
Counsel Brayden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Laura?
Yes.
Counsel Laura, yes. Counsel Lou Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Lou Jean, yes. Counsel Mehea? Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Wrell?
Yes.
Counsel Wrell, yes. Document number 0447 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0448 through 0450 together, please.
Document number 0448, message transmitting certain information under section 17F relative to chronic absenteeism in Boston public schools for school years 2021 through 2022 and 2022 through 2023. Document number 0419, passed by the council on February 5, on February 15, 2023. Document number 0449, message transmitting certain information under section 17F relative to Boston public school sexual assault and misconduct data for school year 2021 through 2022 and docket, and school year 2022 through 2023. Document number 0420, passed by the City Council on February 15, 2023. Document number 0450, message transmitting certain information under section 17F relative to bus drop-off for English high school students. Docket number 0444, passed by the council on February 15, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These docket 0448 through 0450 will be placed on file. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0451, please.
Document number 0451, communication was received from the city clerk, transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for city council action on the designation of the Richards Building downtown Boston, Mass as a landmark, in effect after March 19, 2023, if not acted upon.
Thank you. This docket 0451 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0117 and 0116 together.
Document number 0117, the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, to which was referred on January 11, 2023. Document number 0117, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $870,000 in the form of a grant for climate resiliency, for climate resilience awarded by the BAR Foundation to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund the continued implementation of climate-ready Boston initiatives. This includes advancing coastal resilience and heat resilience strategies, prioritizing equitable electrification, and creating a community tree care program. submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass. And document number 0116, the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, to which was referred on January 11, 2023. Document number 0116, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,633,500 in the form of a grant for the resilient Mokley Connectors awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund pre-construction planning and design activities in the northern and southern areas adjacent to Mokley Park, located along the waterfront of Dorchester and South Boston neighborhoods. The project is separate but complementary to the flood mitigation project within Mokley Park. Submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Laura, the Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Counsel Laura, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. The committee held a hearing on Thursday, February 23, 2023. I was joined by Counselor-at-Large Michael Flaherty and received a letter of absence from Counselor-at-Large Aaron Murphy. Dr. Alison Briesius, the Commissioner of Environment and Department, testified on behalf of the administration during this hearing. The administration testified that docket number 0116 will build on a number of years of community engagement and work to help Boston prepare for the effects of climate change. It was confirmed that the planning and design process will be done not only in collaboration with community partners and neighborhood organizations, but also with the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation and the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, as they are also holders of critical infrastructure that's adjacent to Mokley Park. Ultimately, docket number 0116 is a grant that is supplemental to the $34 million project that's already happening at Mokley Park and will ultimately help implement all of the interventions identified by Climate Ready Boston in the surrounding area while the project at Mokley Park is also happening. The administration testified that docket number 0117 would support ongoing efforts to increase climate resilience across the city through funding increased staff capacity. And so this grant from the BAR Foundation is going specifically to hire project managers, and they'll be working to advance and implement a number of resilience priorities across the city that were also identified through Climate Ready Report, including coastal resilience, heat resilience, energy resilience, and increasing tree canopy. There were questions that were raised regarding the tactical effectiveness of whether the grant could go towards doing more offensive flood mitigation projects rather than defensive ones, and the administration explained that as a part of the Climate Ready Boston study in 2016, their comprehensive study around the harbor concluded that while it may help during a storm, it's ultimately not going to solve the problems that are going to be caused by sea level rise on the coast. But they assured us that they would continue to revisit the idea while carrying out other projects like the ones funded under this grant. At my request, the administration also agreed to update the council on community engagement initiatives and keep the district councillors specifically involved throughout the process. I was very glad to be joined by Counselor Flaherty. As the Chair of this committee, we oftentimes get projects and grants that come through the committee that are really centered on specific neighborhoods, and Counselor Flaherty had a depth of knowledge in the projects that were happening in the surrounding neighborhood already. And so it's really important to me that the community not only be involved, but that the city councillors that represent that area are also involved as these multiple projects move forward. So as the Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, to which the following dockets were referred, I recommend that these dockets ought to pass. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you. Counsel Laura seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket 0116. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0116. Counsel Laura seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket 0117. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0117 has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0407, please.
Document number 0407, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on February 15, 2023. Document number 0407, message in order for your approval. In order, at the recommendation of the Chair of the Board of Election Commissioners, hereby transmit for your approval, your approval of your honorable body in order fixing the date of the preliminary election for this municipal year of September 12, 2023. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bark, the Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Counsel Bark, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We held this hearing back last Friday morning. I want to thank Commissioner Anita Tavares, who joined us, along with Sabino Pimonte, who is the head assistant registrar of voters at the Election Department and famous tall councillors. I was also joined by my colleagues, Counsel Murphy and President Flynn.
that's already happening at Mokley Park and will ultimately help implement all of the interventions identified by Climate Ready Boston in the surrounding area while the project at Mokley Park is also happening. The administration testified that docket number 0117 would support ongoing efforts to increase climate resilience across the city through funding increased staff capacity. And so this grant from the BAR Foundation is going specifically to hire project managers, and they'll be working to advance and implement a number of resilience priorities across the city that were also identified through Climate Ready Report, including coastal resilience, heat resilience, energy resilience, and increasing tree canopy. There were questions that were raised regarding the tactical effectiveness of whether the grant could go towards doing more offensive flood mitigation projects rather than defensive ones, and the administration explained that as a part of the Climate Ready Boston study in 2016, their comprehensive study around the harbor concluded that while it may help during a storm, it's ultimately not going to solve the problems that are going to be caused by sea level rise on the coast. But they assured us that they would continue to revisit the idea while carrying out other projects like the ones funded under this grant. At my request, the administration also agreed to update the council on community engagement initiatives and keep the district councillors specifically involved throughout the process. I was very glad to be joined by Councillor Flaherty. As the Chair of this committee, we oftentimes get projects and grants that come through the committee that are really centered on specific neighborhoods, and Councillor Flaherty had a depth of knowledge in the projects that were happening in the surrounding neighborhood already. And so it's really important to me that the community not only be involved, but that the city councillors that represent that area are also involved as these multiple projects move forward. So as the Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice Resiliency in Parks, to which the following dockets were referred, I recommend that these dockets ought to pass. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you. Councillor Lara seeks acceptance of the committee report. Passage of docket 0116. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0116. Councillor Lara seeks acceptance of the committee report. Passage docket 0117. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0117 has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0407, please. Docket number 0407. The Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on February 15, 2023. Docket number 0407. Message in order for your approval. In order at the recommendation of the Chair of the Board of Election Commissioners, hereby transmit for your approval of your honorable body in order fixing the date of the preliminary election for this municipal year of September 12, 2023. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Councillor Bark, the Chair of the Committee on City Services Innovation Technology. Councillor Bark, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We held this hearing back last Friday morning. I want to thank Commissioner Anita Tavares, who joined us, along with Sabino Pimonte, who is the head Assistant Registrar of Voters at the Election Department and famous tall councillors. I was also joined by my colleagues, Councillor Murphy and President Flynn, and we received a letter of absence from Councillor Lu Jen. The basic topic of this order and what we were discussing is the fact that with the state having made mail-in voting permanent and the ability to offer early voting permanent, both good innovations for voter access in the city of Boston, the kind of statutory standard timeline where the primary preliminary and the preliminary and the municipal elections happen six weeks before the general really no longer works in terms of ballot printing timelines, when you want to actually get it into the mail and to people's doors and then back to us. And so the request here is to move the preliminary date up from where it would be by default, which is September 26, that Tuesday, up to, as the order says, September 12, so that there is enough time for elections to certify the results and then do the ballot order draw and order the ballots and have them back and get them out to everybody who's requested a mail-in ballot with a gracious amount of time for people to return those mail-in ballots. We talked about the fact that obviously this problem isn't going to go away, so I think the council can expect in the near term that elections will come back to us with a more permanent fix, because it doesn't make sense to have to do an order like this every municipal election from now till eternity. So they are working on a more permanent fix to bring to us, and that would take the form of a home rule petition, because it would be a change to the charter and would probably also involve the streamlining of some other kind of outdated details about how the forms and stuff are set up by elections. But that's not what's in front of us today. What's in front of us today is just moving the prelim to September 12, which fortunately is, you know, it's a full week, obviously, after Labor Day weekend. It's not one of these where we're talking about the day after Labor Day weekend, which I'm always skeptical of as an election date. The way in which the order was amended was just that the intention of the Elections Department and what they filed was to say, we're moving the prelim date, but we're not moving all the other deadlines for potential candidates. So there's a series of deadlines laid out for when people need to file a statement of candidacy, when they can show up and pick up nomination papers, when they need to turn nomination papers back in, what's the deadline for folks to challenge, what's the deadline for folks to drop their names from the ballot, all that kind of stuff. And so, but none of that is as closely linked to the printing of the ballots issue. So elections' intention was to move the date for the actual prelim two weeks earlier, but not to also move all those other dates up on candidates by two weeks, because it's not necessary. We just changed the language, because it wasn't totally clear from the original order what the intent was, because it said like, oh, these dates shall remain unchanged, but the way these dates are described in law is in relationship to the preliminary election by a number of weeks. So arguably, they would have changed, even though it said they remained unchanged, since they were never set in the first place. So that's what the fix in the language is, but it's really to just do what the Elections Department had intended, which was to keep those dates this spring as though the prelim election were on September 26, but to move the actual election up to the 12. The Elections Department has told us that they are ready to release the calendar as soon as they've got this from us. I think people can expect to have that out this week, and obviously, that's a big agenda of theirs, is to just make sure that they can have information out equitably to all candidates as soon as possible, since the first of those deadlines starts to hit in April. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would ask that this docket be passed in a new draft as filed in the committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bark. Councillor Bark seeks acceptance of the committee report. Passage of docket 0407 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0407 has passed in a new draft. Matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0151, please. Docket number 0151. Order for a hearing to address contaminated beverages in clubs and bars. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councillor Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Councillor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We held a working session in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice did yesterday, and we've got some updates from the administration, from licensing from the Police Department. We also were joined by State Senator Paul Feeney, who's taken a great lead on this statewide effort, along with our lead sponsors, Councillor Coletta, Councillor Lu Jen, and Councillor Bark, joined by several of my colleagues. Couple takeaways, obviously, was that the Boston Police now have a box to check for responding officers and/or detectives. There's now training around how to sort of identify and how to classify that, and that update in the way that they handle those matters has resulted in 14 incidents being reported most recently. So those are sort of the positive steps that I've been taking in conjunction with listening to advocates around how to strengthen and make our nightlife, our restaurants, our bars safer for residents and visitors alike. We heard testimony from the Licensing Commissioner. We heard testimony from Boston Police detectives. We heard support and testimony from Bark, which is the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center, as well as representatives from the universities through BU's staff. So that said, we obviously will be leaving it in committee. We'll defer to the lead sponsor. She wants to add anything, but she's done tremendous lifting on this, again, working in partnership with our colleagues up at the state level and in partnership, obviously, with the administration and the Police Department. But clearly, steps are being made in the right direction. You know, the concept of contaminated drinks, or also known as drink spiking, or also known as being roofied or roofing someone, all those are very serious incidents that we know are happening in our city and in our establishments. And so the fact that the lead sponsor and the co-sponsors have brought this to everyone's attention and the fact that it's getting the much-needed attention, and this may also be something, as you have referenced, Mr. President, during yesterday's hearing, as we head into the budget season, maybe we need to back that up with some additional resources. So everything from awareness and training are all big pieces of it, but there's also the part that when it happens to someone, they don't necessarily want to come forward or they're reluctant to come forward. But when they do come forward, there ought to be a test that is administered, if they so choose, at either a hospital or a health center. So insurance companies need to partner with us, testing companies need to. So this has a ways to go, but I think that's where we want it to go. We want to make sure that if it happens to anybody in the city of Boston or in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that you have the ability, you have the right, to go get yourself tested for one of those substances that caused you to be under the influence of that specific drug. And those tests should be readily available, if not in the establishments themselves or at an area hospital or health center, or maybe some other social service agency that is equipped and licensed to handle that type of stuff. So again, look forward to more action on this, but we'll defer through the chair to the lead sponsor or co-sponsors if they want to add something. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Flaherty. The chair recognizes Councillor Coletta. Councillor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just want to thank the chair and thank my co-sponsors, Councillor Lu Jen and Councillor Bark, for their partnership on this work. I did see some progress. We did see some progress in this conversation, and that's exactly what you want to see in a working session following our hearing that took place in October. And this was a follow-up conversation to move the ball forward. And, you know, there have been, even though there's been a slight decline in some of the messages that I'm getting from young women and men in our community, we want to make sure that we're setting up folks, patrons, to feel safe if they're going to go out with their loved ones. And so I was pleased to hear movement within the Boston Police Department, and I just want to thank Lieutenant Detective Driscoll for his work in ensuring that we can even get that check mark in the Mark 45, or, excuse me, Mark 43 system. And this way, we can track patterns of behavior and be able to better identify where we need to have some of these preventative systems and technical assistance in helping restaurant and bars put in maybe cameras or having lids available in restaurants. And so I just want to thank him for that, in addition to the training that was a commitment from the BPD. The Licensing Board, as Chair Flaherty mentioned, also came with additional steps in light of recent incidents. They put together an advisory committee of larger venues to put forth an advisory report or set of guidelines for some of the smaller venues in terms of best practices and how to train their bartenders and some of the servers in restaurants. They also committed to working with the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center, so that that list of advisory checklists will actually be serving and meeting the needs of victims. And they also committed to a good Samaritan policy where if somebody were to come to them, if I'm an owner of a restaurant where this has happened, I'm not going to be penalized for maybe over-serving, right? I want to make sure that if I'm going in front of the Licensing Board and I'm trying to ensure that a victim has justice, that I will not see any sort of penalties or fines. And so I'm also grateful for having Senator Paul Feeney join us, who is doing incredible work at the state. His piece of legislation is requiring ERs in hospitals to provide toxicology tests to anybody who says that they feel like they may have been drugged. And this is a barrier that we have identified in former conversations or prior conversations, and so I want to thank him for that. And also thank Ken Ryan from BU in attendance, who has indicated an openness to maybe getting some toxicology kits at student health centers, because we know that this largely happens on university and college campuses. So I do see access to adequate data, setting up data systems for collection, breaking down barriers for access to toxicology tests within that short window as necessary next step. And so we want to continue this conversation, and I do appreciate the partnership from everybody on this, including my co-sponsors and folks who had showed up, and just thank you. And we will make sure that our patrons feel safe to go out whenever they do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Coletta. This docket, 0151, will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0118, please. Docket number 0118. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $297,200 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Local Cultural Council Program awarded by the Massachusetts Cultural Council to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund innovation, innovative arts, humanities, and interpretive sciences programming that will enhance the quality of life in our city. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councillor Coletta, the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Special Events. Councillor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. As mentioned, the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events held a public hearing on February 27, 2023, here in the Ayinella Chamber, to take testimony and consider docket 0118, a message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $297,200 in the form of a grant. Those in attendance, well, before I go to that, letters of support and attendance were sent for the record by Council President Ed Flynn and Councillor Aaron Murphy. Those in attendance from the administration was Chief of Arts and Culture from the Mayor's Office, Cara Elliott Ortega, Nadia Fararia, Director of Administration and Finance, and then also Fini Mascari, Chief of Staff for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. The presentation included the specific use of these funds and various other related components, the background, history, jurisdiction, the processes of outreach, application, selection, allocation, and management by the Boston Cultural Council and the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. This money will be allocated largely for the operational support of arts and culture organizations across the city of Boston, and they prioritize the smaller organizations with budgets under $100,000, which I certainly appreciated. I also had additional questions about taking in demographic data, just to ensure that what we're doing now and how we move forward in the future is actually funding the arts in an equitable way here in the city of Boston, and they promised to come back with some data on that point. So given all of this, based on the testimony and information presented at the hearing, and having considered the same, I respectfully recommend that this matter ought to pass.
Thank you, Councillor Coletta. Councillor Coletta seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0118. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0323. Docket number 0323. Message in order for your approval. A proposed act to improve and modernize planning and community development in the city of Boston. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councillor Royal, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Councillor Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on Monday, February 27, on docket 0323. Message in order for your approval, a proposed act to improve and modernize planning and community development in the city of Boston, which was sponsored by Mayor Wu. I'd like to thank my colleagues. We had almost an entirely full house. Thank you to Council President Flynn. Thank you to Councillor Murphy, Councillor Mejia, Councillor Lu Jen, Councillor Lara, Councillor Flaherty, Councillor Anderson, Councillor Coletta, Councillor Braden, Councillor Bark, and Councillor Baker for your attendance and for your questions. I also want to thank the members of the administration for their attendance, Arthur Jemerson, the Chief of Planning and Director of the BPDA, the Boston Planning and Development Agency, Lisa Harrington, General Counsel for the BPDA, and Devin Quirk, Deputy Chief for Development and Transportation for the Boston Planning and Development Agency. This home rule petition, as filed formally abolishes the Boston Redevelopment Authority, or BRA, and the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, or the EDIC. This act transfers the powers and duties of those entities to an agency newly created by this act and formally adopts this agency as the Boston Planning and Development Agency. During this hearing, we heard from the administration on the intent of this home rule petition, which is to focus on urban renewal, specifically sunsetting urban renewal and modernizing the language of the statute itself, but ensuring this is done by protecting communities that urban renewal currently covers. The administration also stated that the act allows for the transition of real estate tools, which could be used for a new purpose, while ensuring equity, affordability, and resilience. The Committee on Government Operations will hold a working session on this matter virtually on Friday, March 3, at 10:00 a.m., so I hope to see some of you there, to discuss any specific language amendments to this docket, to ensure we are sending the best possible version of this act to the State House. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that this matter ought to remain in committee so that we can hold that working session. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Royal. This docket, 0323, will remain in committee. Motion, orders, resolutions? We're going to take docket 0463 out of order, because we have some workers from Boston University in attendance, I believe. Mr. Clerk, could we please read docket 03, I'm sorry, 0463? Docket number 0463. Councillors Bark and Braden offered the following. Resolution supporting of the residents' life workers at Boston University. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councillor Bark. Councillor Bark, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I suspend Rule 12 and add Councillor Lu Jen as an original co-sponsor?
Hearing no objection. Councillor Lu Jen is added. The chair recognizes Councillor Bark.
Thank you so much. As I have said before, I am proud to have Boston University in my district, District 8, and I am even prouder of the workers who make it run. And as of February 13, as it says in this docket, a majority of Boston University residents' life workers signed authorization cards indicating their intent to unionize with SEIU 509. Folks may well remember that SEIU 509 had a successful organizing drive recently with the graduate workers at BU, which resulted in a vote of 1414 to 28. No, that's not a typo. And I think just really shows how workers all over higher education and really all over the country are recognizing that collective bargaining is just extremely important to worker power, to kind of evening the dynamics with large employers, including when they're a university and nonprofit employers. You know, I think that our residents' life workers are in a kind of particularly precarious situation. The RAs and graduate RAs at BU, rather than compensation, receive housing. And I know that that, you know, may sound to people like, well, that's an unusual, you know, arrangement, and it's not necessarily traditional work. It actually, you know, obviously, it is. You'd otherwise be spending money on rent, but it can put workers in a really awkward situation, because, for instance, there are not clear policies around if a worker needs to take leave, if a worker, like, is terminated. There's kind of no clear policy set. And the problem for that, of course, is that you could get sick, lose your job, and lose your housing all at once. And so I think it's super important, you know, in a world in which the universities really rely on these workers, at, again, the graduate and undergraduate level, that there be, like, clear policies and expectations and that workers are able to have a voice in those, which is so important to kind of determining their lives. So, you know, there's been recently formed res-life unions at Wesleyan University, Barnard College, and Tufts University, some success at UMass Amherst recently as well. And we really are excited to be supporting these workers. There's a group of them here with us today. I do hope, Mr. President, that we might have a brief pause for a photograph in a minute. But the resolution before you today really just states that the council supports the BU Residents' Life Workers Union and calls upon Boston University to ensure a fair and accessible union election process, something that I know that this council has been consistently in favor of. So I'm really grateful for my colleagues, Councillor Braden and Councillor Lu Jen, for for joining me on this matter. Obviously, Counselor Braden has the bits of BU that I don't have, aside from the medical campus. And, yeah, we're just really excited to stand with these workers. As my button says, I stand with ResLife workers from BU today. So, thank you, Mr. President. And please, we'd ask for suspension and passage.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Bach, for including me in this resolution supporting the Boston University Resident Life Workers Union. As Counselor Bach said, BU seems like part of my universe out there in Alston-Brighton, and we have so many students from BU who live and work in our neighborhood. The resident assistants are student leaners and community builders. They're responsible for addressing resident hall uses, rules. They're often the first university workers to respond to student conflict and crises 24/7, and in return, they receive housing and sometimes a meal plan. The workers are calling for equalized compensation for all types of RAs and a direct stipend, and they're also calling for better training and support for responding to issues that arise. And I also want to join the resident life workers, calling upon BU to ensure a fair and accessible union election process. As Counselor Bach has already mentioned, this is a movement across the country that we start to recognize the important and valuable work that our student workers are doing on our university campuses all across the country. And I really want to stand in support of these workers today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jen. Counsel Louis Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Bach and Counselor Braden for adding me to this. I am in support of the residents' life workers, so thank you for your courage in organizing and in standing up to the administration for what you need. Boston is a union city, and we are proud to support you in your unionization efforts. Me and my colleagues have been out there supporting grad workers, and we will do the same for all of you. What students are asking for, student workers are asking for, is reasonable compensation, some sort of accommodation when there are emergencies that happen, when you're dealing and grappling with emergency issues among your residents. Many of us know, who, those of us who have gone to college, know that the RAs had an incredible workload, and so we want to recognize that as work and the dignity in your work. And so I am happy to stand with you in your organizing efforts. As Counselor Braden and Counselor Bach stated, this is part of a national movement, and we are happy to stand with you. So thank you for your courage, and thank you to my Counselor colleagues, and hoping that we can pass this resolution today.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jen. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Or add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Royo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Earl, please add the Chair. Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Louis Jen, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0463. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. And per the request of Counselor Bach, she is requesting a group photo. So if my colleagues could come up.
Okay, recess? Do we need to recess?
We'll take a brief recess. We're back in session. And I think Counselor Bach is out of any more presentations going forward. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0452? And before we do that, I do want to acknowledge that I did want to take one out of, out of order, but I'm not able to do that because of, it's a late file. So apologize to another group that's still here. But, Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0452?
Document number 0452, Counselors Braden and Louis Jen offer the following, an ordinance providing remote access to meetings of municipal public bodies.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a refile of ordinances initially filed in 2021 and in 2022 with a few substantive modifications. For some background, certain provisions of the state's open meeting law were suspended in March of 2020 at the outset of the pandemic to enable public bodies, such as our boards and commissions, to do two things: to hold meetings remotely without a quorum of members being physically present at a meeting location, and to provide the public with adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The temporary suspensions were extended three times, in April 2022, July 2022, and are currently set to expire on March 31st, 2023, after 35 months. The state would need to pass legislation to make any permanent changes allowing members of public bodies to meet remotely or in a hybrid format. As of yesterday, there was a proposal from the House Ways and Means Committee to include an extension of the open meeting law suspension for two years to March 31st, 2025, as part of the supplemental budget. Regardless of what progresses at the state level, we are able to pass a local ordinance to permanently codify policies to continue providing the public with remote access options to attend and offer testimony at meetings. My office received confirmation from the Inspectural Services Department that it intends to continue offering a remote access option for the public to attend and comment at ZBA meetings, either in person or remotely beyond March 31st, while board members would be required to return to the meeting in person. While it's great that ISD and the ZBA are preparing for the anticipated expiration in 30 days, there are still dozens more boards and commissions in the city. Recognizing that there are boards and commissions of varying sizes, and that some are limited in administrative and staffing capacity from city departments, this ordinance would require a body that regularly meets more than five times per year to provide the public with remote access while making it optional for all other public bodies. The requirements would not apply to committees or subcommittees of a public body, but they could choose to adopt these practices. Public notices would have to state whether there is a remote option component, specify whether public testimony will be taken, and whether testimony may be taken in person, remotely, or in writing, provide instructions on how to request disability or language access accommodations, and indicate whether a video recording, minutes, or transcripts are available after the meetings and where to find or request them. This is about setting the standard for how we continue to engage people with disabilities, seniors, people with limited access to transportation, and people with work and family obligations who otherwise would be unable to attend a meeting in person. Regardless of what advances at the state level, I hope that we will be able to find a permanent solution to maintain remote access for the public at the local level. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope that we can make this a more permanent fix for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jen. Counsel Louis Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Braden for adding me. My office has really enjoyed working with your office on this issue. The pandemic obviously wreaked havoc and continues to wreak havoc on a lot of our communities, but we did learn a few things, and we learned that we can bring more people into government. Democracy grows under the light of transparency and accessibility. We are a better city when every resident who wants to can participate and follow the deliberations of public meetings. As I said, one of the silver linings that we learned from the pandemic is the enabling of remote participation in open meetings. We have seen a meaningful increase in resident engagement due to this ability to hold virtual and hybrid meetings during the pandemic. We know that many residents, as Counselor Braden stated, cannot attend in-person meetings due to family, school, and work obligations. Furthermore, residents with disabilities face particular and additional challenges with accessing in-person meetings, and we must continue to make it easier for Black and Brown residents and those historically excluded from government and public meetings by calling them into the process. Democratic engagement is meaningfully higher when our residents can participate in open meetings online, thus making government more effective and accessible to all people. We don't know, although they're taking some action, we don't know exactly what the State House is going to do when the provisions of the open meeting law expire. Officials may still be required to participate in person, but by allowing for hybrid hearings where the public can participate online, we would be offering residents meaningful opportunities to stay involved. Besides the City Council, in our hearings, the City of Boston conducts a lot of public meetings for licensing, permitting, historical commission, community listening sessions, et cetera. Obviously, right now, we are talking as a city about the BPDA and really transforming that, and I'm encouraged by a lot of that work, especially the part that involves being more intentional about how we engage community. And when we think about allowing for remote participation, I think that is part of the discussion. For many of us, virtual or hybrid hearings has made our work easier, but for residents, as those who have a disability, or those working two jobs, or those managing a family, or those who have been historically excluded, creating a hybrid option can be a lifeline of participation. So I am grateful for the work that we've done on this ordinance and looking forward to the work that we will do to make sure that we can continue to make government open and bring in some sunlight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, thank you, Counsel Louis Jen. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or add their name? Please raise your hand. Let me, let me go to Counsel Earl. Counsel Earl, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Counsel Bach and Counsel Louis Jen, for your work on this. City government, as stated by my colleagues, is strongest when we are connected to the voices of our constituents. In the wake of the pandemic, we implemented measures to ensure we could continue to be responsive. And in doing so, we found that, found that we could not only continue business as usual, but we can also expand access for our low-income, elderly, disabled, and working residents. I hear from our residents far too often of the barriers of our current format in hybrid meetings are being done in our boardroom today. And as a council, we should invest in the technology that will eliminate barriers that will bring more voices into City Hall. Looking forward to this conversation to make sure that we can make this a permanent thing in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Earl. Anyone else like to speak or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Murphy, Counsel Earl, please add their chair, please add the Chair. This docket 0452 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0453.
Document number 0453, Counselors Bach and Flynn offer the following, an ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, Ordinance Section 7-3, Bay Village Historic District.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you for being my co-sponsor on this, as I think is well-known, Bay Village is in Counselor Flynn's district, but is my home of origin. And this is actually a very small change to their historic district ordinance that's been already negotiated and agreed to by both the resident organization there, the Bay Village Neighborhood Association, which formerly endorsed it, and the commissioners of the historic district. There is some, when the historic district was originally set up, and I think it was 1983, it, it had just like a few carve-outs. So, for instance, strangely enough, like, the commission can advise on the color of paint on masonry, but not on wood. And so it's just created like a little bit of weirdness around some of the review dynamics. And so I think everybody felt like it's been confusing to applicants, you can have a more coherent conversation. And so what this, what this legislation does is it just actually gets rid of a couple of the exclusions that are in the original legislation and reduces to the ones that kind of make more sense. So, like I said, it's been broadly agreed, kind of within the Bay Village community. Obviously, you know, the, I'll just, you know, for reference for folks who might be wondering, where is Bay Village and why is it a historic district? It's kind of sandwiched between the South End, Back Bay, Chinatown. It's actually one of the very first neighborhoods in the city that was done on fill. So the hints in the name, Bay Village, like the Back Bay, it was once water. And they actually filled in Bay Village and built these houses mainly for an artisan community in the 1820s and 1830s, so before Back Bay, the South End, the Fenway were filled in. And a lot of the folks who lived in these houses originally were the folks who were working on the bigger Back Bay mansions, and it's got this really long artisan history. And then, and actually, sort of both like federal houses, Greek revival style and Victorian style. In the 1860s, they had to raise the entire neighborhood because of sewage issues. And so the streets and the houses were all raised up. It means that you still see in Bay Village houses that have a kind of window peeking out from the basement, but it's a full window, and it doesn't make much sense, except that it used to be the ground floor window. The neighborhood in the 20th century actually became the hub for Boston's movie distribution industry, and so there's still quite a lot of, like, cornerstones and stuff belonging to Paramount Pictures and other major film distributors. And so it's had a kind of neat artisanal history on the movie side as well. So, like I said, small set of changes. I think we're not asking for a suspension and passage today because want to be able to just go and say, hey, this is what it is, and so that everyone feels comfortable, that it's been agreed to by the community. But I did want to give the Council that context and, and, yeah, and again, thank Counsel, Counselor Flynn for being my co-sponsor on it. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Bach. I was going to speak on this matter, but Counsel Bach took all my thunder here, so... But I am proud to represent the Bay Village, and Counsel Bach's parents are my biggest supporters there. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just through the chair to the maker, I just want to make sure that, there was some talk that the Ring door cams were, is this part of that? So from a public safety perspective, I think that some of our historic areas of districts were sort of shunning the door cams.
That's a Beacon Hill issue.
Okay. So it's obviously an important issue. So we, as a city, whether you're in a historic district or not, we have a responsibility, obviously, to keep our residents safe. And/or, if you have the ability to have that type of security system for your home or your business, you should have the ability to do that, and also to be able to participate and cooperate with our local Boston Police Department when they knock on your door and they'd like to take, to view your footage in the event of an incident happening in front of that location or on that street. So I just want to make sure that we're not, by ordinance, carving out, you know, people's security systems. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Or add your name, please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Coletta, Counsel Louis Jen, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Earl. Please add Counsel Lara. This docket 0453 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0454.
Document number 0454, Counselors Arroyo and Coletta offer the following, an ordinance formally creating the Office of Food Justice and establishing a food recovery program in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Royo. Counsel Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by thanking the Food Law and Policy Clinic at Harvard Law for their help in their research and their, their work on the legal aspects of the ordinance that's before you today. I also want to thank Counsel Coletta for her partnership in this. Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection estimates that in Massachusetts alone, about a million tons of food goes to waste every year. So yearly, in Massachusetts, we waste about a million tons of food. And... So yearly in Massachusetts, we waste about a million tons of food, and the Massachusetts State Legislature in 2014, due to the environmental issues of methane of wasted food, put in a sort of recycling compost requirement for food generators or food waste generators. In November of 2022, they enhanced it, and essentially, the goal of that legislation was to get food waste out of landfills and into a compost recycling program, but nothing in Massachusetts. In fact, this would be the first in the country for a municipality requires that that food actually go to its highest purpose, which is if you have it, rather than compost it, rather than throw it into a landfill, try to find someone who can actually eat it. And I just want to get into sort of the basis of the backbone for why we did this. When I was first sworn in in 2020, the pandemic hit in full force about three months in, and when you take a job as a district counselor, you're very aware that you're going to get phone calls about potholes, you're going to get phone calls about electrical grids and my power's out, you're going to get all these different kind of community-related constituent service-related calls. The thing that was overwhelming was the amount of phone calls we received from people who were hungry, from people who needed access to food, who needed access to food programs, and what was particularly heartbreaking during that process was having the inability to necessarily refer people to places we were referring to them to because we would get word back from those organizations, hey, we don't have enough supply for this, and so we can't be a referral space for you in this case because we've sort of reached capacity. And to give people a sort of snapshot of what we're talking about, just in 2020, calls to Project Bread's food source hotline in Boston increased by 262%. The Greater Boston Food Bank saw an increase of 2,554% in distribution requests. That's very large. We are talking about, the estimate is about 1 in 5 residents in Massachusetts suffer from food insecurity, so every day you are likely passing people who are suffering from food insecurity, and so we really wanted to get a solution to this that we thought was manageable and that would work and that everybody would sort of buy into, and so we started looking at food generators, food waste generators, and how we could make them play a role in this process, and we saw that New York, Washington State, New York State, and California State had created sort of a template for this to move forward. It's something that in Europe they've been doing for quite some time, which is requiring these food generators to actually take it upon themselves to create agreements with nonprofits and agencies that distribute food directly to people. So in other words, if you have something that has to be eaten within 48, 72 hours, then you can get it picked up and brought to and delivered to a food pantry or soup kitchen or somewhere where that food will not go to waste. So excellent implementation in other places. It has worked really well to give people a sense of what we're talking about here. The food recycling program in Boston would be organized and conducted through the Office of Food Justice, so this ordinance would actually formally codify the Office of Food Justice, which already exists, and it would give them certain responsibilities. The folks that we're talking about having to apply this ordinance to their business are what we would call Tier 1 commercial edible food generators. There are supermarkets, grocery stores with a total facility size equal to or greater than 10,000 square feet, food service providers and food distributors, wholesale food vendors, large restaurants with 250 or more seats or a total facility size equal or up to or greater than 5,000, hotels with onsite food facility with 100 or more beds, large venues and large events, colleges or universities, local or state agencies with large cafeterias, and any public or private school grades kindergarten through 12 that do onsite food facilities and generate excess food waste. And the way that we would seek to enforce this, and first and foremost, one of the things that was really successful in other locations was a lead-in time to having this process become enforceable, and so this wouldn't lead to enforcement until 2026. So even though this would start the program and start the pipeline and start getting everything sort of set up, nobody would be subject to enforcement until 2026. On top of that, if you for some reason were unable to comply with this ordinance, because it would be an undue economic hardship on your business, we will have an undue economic hardship waiver, and so that you will be able to not have this applied to you, and you can get that re-upped as often and as many times as you need that re-upped. It would last a year throughout the course of your business if this would be an undue economic hardship for you. What this would do and the way we would enforce this, because these are sort of common questions, you know, we're not going to be doing inspections on every restaurant, hotel, supermarket. The way that this is enforced in other states that I think we can do here is it requires those Tier 1 operators to enter into agreements with not-for-profits that donate food, that provide food. We are then able to monitor which of these Tier 1 operators have not entered into these agreements, simply just show us this contract, and then we'll know that you are in compliance. And then those operators are supposed to report to the city just how much food they are getting and generating from these Tier 1 operators and providing. And I want to just give a shout out to organizations that do this work. Loving Spoonfuls is the largest in New England, and they pick food up and deliver it directly to doors. Food Link Mass and the Greater Boston Food Bank are the kinds of organizations we're talking about here. The other thing I just want to point out, some people have raised this concern about liability for organizations and opening them up to liability. There's a federal law, which is called the Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Donation Act, which shields food donors from criminal and civil liability, but Massachusetts actually built upon that in 2014 and protect eligible food donors that donate food to recovery organizations that distribute apparently wholesome food to individuals, and so this wouldn't open up businesses or supermarkets or anyone to any undue legal complications. This would simply be a way for us to ensure that edible wholesome food that otherwise could be eaten is actually getting to families that need that food rather than going to a landfill or into a composting process. I'm incredibly excited to get this started. We would be a first in the country to pilot this and to do this correctly at a municipal level. There are three states, as I mentioned, in the United States that are starting this out. All of those laws essentially went into effect in 2022 or there's about, and so it's a relatively new idea, but I do believe that we have the capacity and the ability to have our businesses and our frontline stakeholders buy into this process, and the feedback so far has been really great, so I'm really excited about providing meals to people who need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I do just want to thank the lead sponsor, Counselor Arroyo, on this, who has done incredible work, working in partnership with the Harvard Law School Food Law and Policy Clinic. Boston could be a model municipality, and we would be the first to adopt this sort of food recovery program, which would require some of these larger grocery stores, restaurants, and hotels to donate, underscore, save-to-consume leftover food. This ordinance also formally establishes the Office of Food Justice, which we all know is already assisting some of our wonderful nonprofits on the ground and are already feeding our most vulnerable. Hunger is silent, but a stigmatized issue. We largely know somebody or probably know somebody who is going hungry right now. This is our family, our friends, and our neighbors. According to Project Bread, food insecurity in Massachusetts doubled during the pandemic, increasing from 8% to almost 20%. I have personally seen hundreds of folks lining the corners in the streets of East Boston, at the East Boston Soup Kitchen, at Harvest on the Vine, in Charlestown, waiting to get their meals for the week through groceries. And so there are organizations already doing incredible work, and I think the City of Boston can go above and beyond through this program to provide food for our most vulnerable. And the goal at the end of the day is to provide whole nutritious food for those residents. And so as mentioned, this order would compel first larger and then smaller food generators to compile their edible leftovers. I think the timeline that we have laid out is reasonable. Obviously, there's going to be more conversations to be had, but we welcome folks to the table to make this the best possible program that we can in order to feed some of our most vulnerable here in the City of Boston. So again, thank you to the lead co-sponsor and partners like Loving Spoonfuls, who have already helped us out with this proposal, and I do look forward to the conversations ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Bredin. Counsel Bredin, you have the floor.
I want to thank my colleagues, Counselor Arroyo and Counselor Coletta, for bringing this initiative forward and all those who've worked on formulating this effort. I know from my experience volunteering at the food pantry in Austin-Brighton that Loving Spoonfuls and the Greater Boston Food Bank and all of those folks who are working on food rescue, there's so much really good edible food being thrown in the trash and in the landfill when there's so many thousands and thousands of folks in our community and across the Commonwealth who go to bed hungry at night. So I really applaud this. I think Boston should be a leader in this space, and please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bredin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I just want to thank the sponsors of this ordinance for putting this on the floor. I think that this is an issue that folks have been having a conversation about, not just in the city, but all across the country for an incredible amount of time. I have been aware of this issue, unfortunately, since I was a very young girl. My mother used to clean at the Faneula Bagel in Chestnut Hill, if anybody's ever been over there, and she used to always bring home at the end of the day a bag of the leftover bagels, and used to tell me that she could get in trouble for bringing them home. And so I remember that that's the first time that I became aware of the fact that you can not, that you're not allowed to give food that other people would eat away to people who would benefit from it, and so I think that this is incredibly overdue. I'm excited to move this work forward, and I would like to sign my name on it, please.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. 20 years ago, I actually sat and served with Counsel Ricardo Arroyo's dad, Counsel Felix Arroyo, and he actually proposed vegetable oil and grease as part of a biofuel for diesel engines, which at that time I thought was, he was way ahead of his time, but I have to think that this is, I have to say, this is something that has, its time has come. All of us have gone into an establishment later in the evening on the way home and saw and have seen a whole rack or tray of food right before closing, and you naturally have to ask, hey, what are you going to do with that? And they say, well, there's nothing we can do with it, we have to throw it away, and it could be pizzas, it could be bakery items, it's, you name it, as Counsel Bredin had just mentioned, it's good and it's edible food that unfortunately goes right in. So this is an idea that its time has come, not only here in Boston, but across the state and across the country. Please add my name. Look forward to an expedited hearing, and let's try to get a pilot program at least or a model on the books so that our local establishments, who by the way, it pains them to have to do this too, when you're literally dumping a tray of whatever, chicken parm, eggplant, pizza, whatever it is, is going right in the trash, it just sends a horrendous message to those that are food insecure and/or to our local food pantries. We all know, I'm not going to out anyone, Counsel President, but we know establishments in our own neighborhood that don't play by these rules. They actually deliver food to some of our more vulnerable residents, they work with our halfway houses, our treatment houses, kind of off the radar, but in lieu of them throwing their food away, oftentimes they'll call our office, they'll go to the fire station, they'll go to the police station. So again, there's, that effort is underway, not just in our neighborhood, but across the city. Wouldn't it be great to have that codified? Wouldn't it be great to have a pilot program that we can model? So again, an idea, I believe that's, that's time has come, and look forward to participating. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the lead sponsors and the co-sponsors on this. I think it's exceptionally important and high time for us to do this, but I also would like to add that we ask for the program to also include recipes to everything that's going to be given away, so when you're collecting, I used to collect from Panera as a nonprofit to give away in like different ways and programs, and I would have to ask them like each recipe for everything that they were baking or giving away, especially if we're going to include Cheesecake Factory, I'm going to need all of their recipes, every single one. Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, allergies, allergies.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker, Counsel Block, Counsel Bredin, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Luizhen, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worell.
Sorry.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, please add the Chair. This Docet 0454 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0455, please.
Docent number 0455. Counsel Flynn offered the following. In ordinance amending the City of Boston Code relating to the study and report on the trafficking of illegal firearms.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Bredin. Counsel Bredin, may I add Counsel Worell as an original co-sponsor?
Seeing no objection or hearing no objection, Counsel Worell is added.
Thank you, Counsel Bredin. This is an ordinance that would eventually require Boston Police Department to conduct a study, an annual study, a report with data on the flow of firearms in review of ways that illegal firearms are being transported into our city. As you know, gun violence is a leading cause of death and injuries in our country, and our city has certainly experienced gun violence. Gun trafficking, illegal flow of firearms, is a major contributor, obviously, to gun violence, and with Boston Police recovering more than 900 firearms in 2022. In 2021, of the firearms recovered at scenes that were traced using the National Integrated Ballistic Information, only 10% were purchased in Massachusetts, while the rest were brought into our state from 18 other states. So most of the firearms at crime scenes are outside of Massachusetts. But what this ordinance would do, it would be a comprehensive study in review of the flow of firearms into the City of Boston. It would help law enforcement and policymakers better understand the impact of illegal gun trafficking. In this data, it would help craft strategies to reduce gun violence in our city and hopefully across the state as well. This ordinance would require the Boston Police Department to disclose in an annual report a number of details for each firearm seized or surrendered in the city and obtained by the Boston Police Department, as well as a review of the ways firearms are illegally transported into Boston. This is a similar ordinance that passed in New York City last year. I hope that this ordinance can shed light on illegal firearm trafficking that's impacting our city. Thank you, Counsel Bredin.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counsel Worell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to President Flynn for including me in this work and bringing this before us, and as we work to address gun violence throughout our city, it is critical that we are gathering data to best understand the issues we face. Massachusetts has strong gun laws, but as we heard from President Flynn, is majority of those guns that are coming into Massachusetts are not from our state, and in order to address this, we will need to build out our data collection and analysis tools to ensure that silos are broken down. We must also work to address ghost guns, which is now starting to pop up, and other weapons that are designed to be less traceable. I'm looking forward to the conversation. Thank you for including me.
Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Bredin, and thank you to Counselor Flynn and Counselor Worell for putting this incredibly important issue on the floor. When I was a street worker, I worked with an organization called Citizens for Safety on a program that they had called Operation Lipstick, and Nancy Robinson and the women who work for Operation Lipstick and Citizens for Safety have for a long time been ringing the alarm about trafficking, specifically straw purchases that oftentimes are made by partners or family members of the folks who are trafficking guns into the City of Boston. This program is led by women who have been not only directly impacted by gun violence, but have themselves been involved in straw purchases, and so for me, that was an incredibly innovative program that was really getting at the heart of the issue, which is how guns are getting into the city and really continuing to ask that question, that as we make sure that we're targeting the root causes, making sure that we're supporting young people who are involved or impacted by this, that we're also talking about how these guns are getting into our community, because our young people are typically not the ones that are bringing them in, and so I'm incredibly heartened by this initiative, and please consider me a partner in anything that you might need to get this done and add my name.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to add their name? Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to add their, their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Alara, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Murphy, Counselor, and please add my name. Docet 0455 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docet 0456, please?
Document number 0456, Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Louie Jean offered the following: Order for Hearing to Restrict Upfront Rental Costs for Tenants.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Alara as a third co-sponsor.
Seeing and hear no, seeing and hearing no objection, Counselor Alara is added. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, Boston is one of the most expensive cities to rent or own property. Boston is the only other city, other than New York City, which is in the process of banning these, with broker's fees for tenants and prices that have gone up significantly in the past couple of years, which is why the conversation is prevalent now. This has been an ongoing issue for some time now, and our residents, particularly Black and Brown residents of Boston, are facing anti-displacement and eviction. Many have already been displaced due to rising rental fees and restricting the upfront cost for, that can serve as a temporary solution before we permanently alleviate the issue of up rental cost and upfront rate rental cost and broker's fees. Boston should be leading by example in caring for our residents, especially considering our overwhelming homelessness crisis. We have lost about 10,000 Black residents in the last two decades because of the increasing in accessibility of housing in our city, some of which are owned by private corporations and only play a larger role in a systemically racist and disproportionately displacement and disenfranchisement community supported by the city. I'm asking for us to basically hold a hearing and have a conversation about the upfront rental costs and take the unbearable weight of decades-old practices off the tenants of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counselor Louie Jean. Counselor Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. I am incredibly excited to work on this, my office. One of the earliest calls that we got was from a constituent who was saying that they couldn't take an apartment because of how expensive the upfront costs are. Folks are often asked for first month, last month, security deposit, and if they have to pay a broker's fee, if your rent is $2,000, you're often asked to pay upwards of $8,000 just as an upfront cost. And at that point, a lot of our residents can't afford to live in this city. So my office has been doing research and that's, and there's a groundbreaking study in 2020 that called Qualified Renters Need Not Apply that showed that race and class played a major role in how one is treated when seeking housing. And not only that, the same study demonstrated that real estate brokers play an outsized role in discrimination in the rental housing market. Of the 200 testers in the study, 182 had contact exclusive, had contact exclusively with real estate brokers. And we know that not all real estate brokers are bad. There, we have some that are great and some even on the council, but we know that passing on these fees to our tenants can be really big barriers. As a second most expensive city to rent, we really need to get at that. I know in Counselor Braden's district, for example, we have talked about how broker's fees often are a really big barrier to residents in your district, especially to our young people, especially to our artists, especially to Black and Brown folks. So I'm excited to continue this conversation. It's not new for the city of Boston, actually. Former Mayor Walsh, former Secretary Walsh, actually commissioned a study and a group to really look at broker's fees and look at, into eliminating them. This is continuing that work. And so I'm happy to be doing that work and to really, you know, be responding to the constituents who ask us to look into this all the time and to reduce the barriers to housing. So thank you and I look forward to the work.
Thank you, Counselor Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Counsel Alara. Counsel Alara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to Counselor Fernandez Anderson and Counselor Louie Jean for including me in this hearing order. I want to join the chorus of stories in terms of folks really having trouble or calling our offices, really struggling to pay the upfront fees. Just a week ago, when we announced that we were going to be working on the hearing for the Renters' Bill of Rights, a constituent sent us a message on Instagram letting us know that their landlord was asking them to pay a lease renewal fee, just to renew the lease one time and adding a fee on top of them. And they were unsure if it was legal. And so we had to do the groundwork and get a lawyer to send them a letter that they could send to their landlord to let them know ultimately that they couldn't charge that kind of fee. And so what we're seeing is that not only just upfront costs, but frivolous charges for renters are just increasing and making it impossible for people to be able to secure a rental apartment. Right now, the housing crisis is really requiring that we implement every possible intervention so that we can lower lease costs and stabilize tenant. And upfront fees for renters have always been prohibitive just because of the amount, and especially they're especially prohibited for poor and working-class people who are not only more prone to displacement but also have higher rates of eviction. I think that there are limits to what landlords can consider move-in cost, but most tenants don't know what it is, what is or isn't allowable, which is underscoring for me, again, the need for a renters' bill of rights in the city of Boston. We have programs that support first-time homebuyers in meeting their closing cost or their down payments, but we don't have as much support for existing for renters to pay for their upfront costs here in the city or anywhere in the country, really. So I'm excited to move this conversation forward with the co-sponsors, and I look forward to implementing more protections for renters in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Alara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and I'll be brief. I wanted to thank Counsel Fernandez Anderson for filing this and definitely please add my name. The one additional dimension that I wanted to add is, you know, as folks know, we have a law against source of income discrimination here in Massachusetts, meaning that you can't prevent somebody from renting because they would use a voucher. But the reality is that these upfront costs are often one of the ways in which people informally discriminate against voucher holders. It's actually something that the Boston Housing Authority spent quite a lot of energy on and has sort of like tried to create some programs so that it can kind of help get its renters into these situations. But it's a real barrier and, you know, there are plenty of ways, even, even if you say, hey, like the landlord needs to be able to hold a security deposit, you can prorate the way that that's going to be paid. Like, there are ways to, like, to deal with that without creating what Counsel Louie Jean referred to as kind of like upfront burden of, you know, $8,000, maybe sometimes $10,000, because it just, it really does serve as another source of informal source of income discrimination in the state. So I just wanted to add my sense that it's, it's long past time for change on that front. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Fernandez Anderson for bringing this forward. It's very, very important. And Counsel Louie Jean, the, I'm, Counsel Bach has stolen my thunder again. The barriers to folks who have vouchers and the additional cost of, of these extra fees, I've heard from folks that this is a significant barrier to their participation in getting, getting even, to even be considered for a rental apartment if their source of income is, or the way to pay is a voucher. The other, I've had a conversation with a constituent recently who was relocating back to Boston from DC. She had a friend look at the, go to look at the apartment. The broker never appeared. She never got to see the apartment ahead of time. She didn't, you know, she was, and then at the end of it, she was charged a month's rent for this broker's services that never happened. So I think there's, as Counsel Louie Jean said, there's some excellent brokers, there's some good practice, but there are also some practices that are blatantly predatory and take advantage of a situation. And I think it's long past time that we try and amend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or add your name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Bach, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worrell. This Docet 0456 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, we're onto Docet 0457, please.
Document number 0457, Counselors Arroyo and Fernandez Anderson offered the following: Order for Hearing to Discuss Boston Public Schools' Lack of Religious and Dietary Requirements for Jewish, Muslim, and Plant-Based Students.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. This was an issue, the lack of kosher, halal, or plant-based meals in Boston public schools was actually an issue brought to me by some parents who were seeking those meals for their children in BPS, which was surprising to me because I was a public defender before I did this work. And our incarceration, our, our household corrections are required by law to provide these meals because we understand the importance of people's religious accommodations. But Boston public schools do not provide these meals to our students. And so we are seeking a hearing to have a conversation about how we can go about ensuring that halal, kosher, and plant-based meals are made available to children in BPS who have those specific dietary restrictions. It's important that we teach the whole child, and part of teaching a child or teaching anyone is making sure that they are fed. And so we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can as a city to provide for those families. I was actually surprised, you could put this one in the, I didn't know we didn't do that category because this seems very much like something that should have already been happening. I know that Michelle Wu, Mayor Michelle Wu, announced, I believe it was last year, a new contract with City Fresh Foods. And so I think that that is a step in the right direction. And I'd like to have a hearing to have a conversation about how we go about ensuring that the families who this applies to, which are probably several thousand, that they are receiving the, what they need on a day-to-day basis to meet their dietary needs. And so this is one of those things where I thought we were already doing it. We're not, and I'm seeking to make sure that we do. New York, its state legislature has started work on doing the exact same thing in New York, but we're overdue on this. I'm grateful and appreciative of the parents who brought this to my attention, and I look forward to having this hearing. And I also want to thank Tanya Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Anderson, for her partnership on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Counsel, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the original co, I mean, original sponsor, Counsel Arroyo, for adding me as a partner in this conversation. I think that we're all, we are all talking about inclusivity, but I think that, you know, we're often not very intentional in terms of how, what, or what that looks like. And we are what we eat, right? So in religious practices, at least for me as a Muslim woman, what we eat is based on our state of mind, our health, and basically our way of life. And even how we eat, or where we eat, or with what we eat, is a thing. So I look forward to the conversation, without going any further about what halal means or the difference between kosher or halal, or vegan and vegetarian, pescatarian. There are so many diverse ways of practicing your way of life, and I'm very happy to be a part of this conversation and looking forward to hopefully implementing some change in BPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you again to the makers. I think, and I've had some conversations, it's not in the, in the Boston public school space, but more in relation to our Jewish community in Alston Brighton, thinking about kosher meals for schools generally, including Boston public schools. But one issue that seemed to have come up is that in terms of supply, suppliers, that there has to be sort of a critical mass to make it an economically favorable situation. So I think, you know, by, by working together with, with schools that are in the independent sector, in the private sector, the, we may be able to get to that critical mass so that it actually supports small businesses to be direct suppliers. I think that's one of the issues with regard to finding vendors to, for Boston public schools, maybe that the, that they haven't been able to identify suppliers. So I'm hopeful that we could explore that and see if we can find a solution. Thank you. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Alara. Counsel Alara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just want to rise as a possible beneficiary of this policy, as someone who is vegan and is trying to transition. My kid, who is mostly vegan, sans a chicken nugget here and there. So if any parents are watching and they have a good vegan chicken nugget that their kid will eat, please send me recommendations. In any case, I typically have to wake up earlier in the morning to prepare Zaire's lunch to go to school because there are not plant-based food options for him. So as he gets older, I would really love, it would be really nice for him to be able to eat with his classmates in the cafeteria. And I think that this is not only respectful of people's religious practices but of people's decisions, whether it be environment-based or focused on care and love for animals, that they have food that they can eat. So please add my name, and I would love to have more conversations around possible vendors for plant-based food at Boston public schools because I know a lot of incredible restaurants, not only in the city but in the district, who I think would be willing and able to provide that service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Alara. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or add your name? Please raise your hand.
Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Bach, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Alara, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worrell. Please add the Chair. This Docet 0457 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0458, please.
Document number 0458, Counsel Worrell offered the following: Order for Hearing to Assess Expanded Hospital and Community-Centric Violence Prevention and Intervention.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Anderson and Counsel Murphy.
Hearing no objection, both Counsel Anderson and Counsel Murphy are added. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell.
Boston is home to world-class institutions and community groups that are working to address violence throughout our city. These folks are called upon by cities across the globe to address their issues, yet are frequently neglected in their own city. These groups provide invaluable services that have kept hundreds of Bostonians alive, have helped to repair communities, and work to heal individual traumas and wounds. It is time that our city government steps up and supports these groups as they have supported us. The issues that feed violence are complex, as are solutions. Part of the complexity that we must work through is a question of coordination and collaboration. In facing similar challenges, the city of Hartford has worked to build a comprehensive intervention effort, bringing together hospitals and community partners. They aim to work side by side to make sure we seize that moment of opportunity where someone becomes a victim of violence or gun violence, to connect them to resources and support services that will last long after the physical wounds have healed. The city of Boston can learn from our neighbors, and it's time that we, we look at formalizing collaborative structures, ensuring coordination, and making sure that organizations doing the work have the resources they need to do so. Boston is an asset-rich. It's time to us to build these resources and enable them to be effective. And this is just a continuation on the gun violence and violence work that our office is doing. And we feel like formalizing all the work that all hospitals are doing and all community partners are doing here in the city of Boston could reap a lot of benefits when it comes to combating violence intervention and prevention solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you to the lead sponsor on this hearing order. I look forward to the conversations. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to really talk about what does intervention and prevention looks like and also holding private institutions and, of course, nonprofits such as hospitals and universities accountable for the communities that they're thriving from. I think there are already some services in our communities that are considerable preventative programs, but I think obviously you felt that they could do more or that we could create this sort of ecosystem of services. And I really appreciate that. I also wanted to bring to light that I also wanted to bring to light that my office has been working with Black Male Advancement, and I know that, I look forward to continuing to partner with you in terms of mentorship programs or sponsorship programs that private institutions can support Black and Brown boys in our communities to continue to invest in their lives in a preventative way. Thank you so much for thinking, being such a forward thinker on this, and I look forward to the work.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Counselor Rurrell, for including me. When I read through your hearing order on Monday, in the whereas clause that said intervening in disrupting and ending cycles of violence requires collaborative coordinated community-based action, when I call to say I absolutely agree with you. And as we know, our community centers are welcoming places where many of our immigrants and underserved communities access because of their language and cultural welcomeness. Also, places expanded violence prevention and intervention programs. If we're putting them in those spaces where community members feel safe to go and those closest to the violence are accessing these spaces the most, I think it's a great idea. So, I'm glad for this hearing order and look forward to the conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add your name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bock, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Braden, Counselora Lara, Counselor Luizhen. Please add the Chair. This docket 0458. This docket 458 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0459.
Docket number 0459, Counselor Arroyo offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss challenges Latino-owned businesses and entrepreneurs face when accessing government and corporate contracts.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a hearing order asking us to discuss the challenges Latino-owned businesses and entrepreneurs are facing with accessing government and corporate contracts here in the City of Boston. We know that the 2020 disparity study that took the numbers from 2014 to 2019 showed that out of 2.1 billion contracts that the City awarded, only 18.2 million or 0.8% of those contracts were awarded to Latino-owned businesses. And there was a recent study that was publicized, I believe, two, I almost want to say three, four days ago, by either GBH or WBUR, discussing specifically that nationally this is a trend and that it, and what I would sort of remind folks who are listening to this and say, well, maybe they're just not eligible, what generally is happening is that they're not being told in the response to the declining of giving them these contracts, they're not being told how to become competitive for these contracts, or how and in what ways they can make their applications better. And generally speaking, when you see a disparity of this size where 0.8% of contracts are being awarded to Latino-owned businesses, but in Massachusetts, their payroll has actually doubled and is something that is actually a growing class of entrepreneurship here in the state. It's usually a systemic issue that is keeping us from getting to that, to that solution and is creating that inequity. And so, the goal of this hearing is simply to figure out what we are doing to help them access government contracts and create competitive bids or bids that we are accepting for government contracts, and then making sure that we are creating best practices which may go beyond just the Latino businesses, but all businesses, and making sure that we are telling them, you know, if you applied for a contract, this is why we did not select you, these are the ways in which you can present better or perform better when you are asking for these contracts. I think we should have a feedback system so that we are creating a competitive market for these contracts and that those contracts are then getting to all people, frankly, with equal access and opportunity, and that we are addressing gaps like this. So, I look forward to holding that hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn. I just want to thank the maker, Counselor Arroyo, for his leadership on this. That statistic is jarring, and it's completely unacceptable. It's the first time that I've seen it, and so I really appreciate the approach with this hearing order. I had the pleasure of attending a Veronica Robles entrepreneurship showcase in East Boston just recently and seeing some of the faces of these young adults, I'm not going to call them kids, they were young adults, they were so excited to get into the field and sector of entrepreneurship. And so, if we could work with community partners like Veronica, doing incredible work in the community, and just letting folks know that this is an option, that government contracts are an option, I think that that's another avenue that we can explore. But I just wanted to get up and express my gratitude and thank the maker for bringing this to the forefront of public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselor Bock. Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and please also add my name. I think that there's a huge opportunity here. I was just chatting with a major hospital system in my district, and, you know, I think in a lot of ways, the next step from our disparity study is recognizing that a lot of the types of things that keep contractors from, like diverse contractors from successfully competing for a lot of the things that the City of Boston needs, it's the same for all of our large corporations. And so, I think that, like, you know, and in fact, many of the disparity studies studied sectors are exactly the same. And so, I think really challenging, you know, we're obviously in a lot of institutional master planning processes in my district with our largest buyers, our Eds and Meds. You know, I think challenging those folks to kind of come along on this journey that the City of Boston is also on so that it's not, it's not that we're just telling them to do it, it's actually something that we are also working on, but saying like, hey, if everybody is trying to, you know, source more diverse food contractors or other contractors, like, let's do that together. So, I just wanted to voice that that's something that has been coming up in my conversations with these large entities in my district, and I think there's like a real opportunity here for a synergy between the city and those sectors as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bock. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Counselor Bock, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselora Lara, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Murphy. Please add the Chair, Counselor Rurrell as well. This docket 0459 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseur. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0460.
Docket number 0460, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Resolution to explore a need for a senior recreational center in Roxbury.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, my office has been partnering with several institutions, but particularly with Northeastern to do an anti-displacement project, and in that project, we began with, a year ago, with asset mapping, sort of a strength-based approach to look at what are the deficits and, of course, assets in Roxbury. D7 is a whole, but we tried to focus on neighborhood by neighborhood. So, in Roxbury, we realize that it's a place where we have a wealth of resources and, of course, historic landmarks and beautiful culture, arts and culture. However, we have not properly taken care of our seniors. This resolution in particular is asking you, my colleagues today, to support me in at least looking at a study to implement or to develop a center, a holistic center, that we can actually begin to take care of our seniors. Yes, we have some nursing homes or we have senior homes, but we do not have actual holistic recreational center where seniors can go and work out and play and do whatever exercises and functions that they want. They'd have to go to different locations to get each component, and we think that seniors, of course, in Roxbury deserve more if there is a place where it's more focused on, again, holistic health and a place specifically for seniors that where they can also bring their families or maybe mentor a young person in District 7 or otherwise in Boston would be a wonderful thing. So, today I'm asking that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution again to look into a study that would create a recreational holistic center for seniors in Roxbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone like to speak on this matter or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bock, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselora Lara, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Rurrell. Please add the Chair. Counselor Fernandez Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of 0460. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. If the ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0461.
Docket number 0461, Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Rurrell offer the following: Resolution honoring the legacy of MLK and Mrs. King through the establishment of King's Heritage Trail.
Mr. Clark, before we take this docket, may we go back to 0460 and do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 0460, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bock?
Aye.
Counselor Bock, aye. Counselor Braden?
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Coletta?
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Luizhen?
Yes.
Counsel Luizhen, yes. Counsel Mejia? Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Rurrell?
Yes.
Counsel Rurrell. Docket number 0460 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This docket has been adopted. Mr. Clark, can we continue on docket 0461, please?
Docket 0461, Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Counselor Rurrell offer the following: Resolution honoring the legacy of MLK and Mrs. King through the establishment of King's Heritage Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Luizhen.
Hearing no objection. Counsel Luizhen is added. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at the history of Boston, we have seen many notable historical figures come and go, from W E B Du Bois to Bill Russell, from Mel Nia Cass to Malcolm X. We have been a city that has benefited tremendously from the contributions of African-Americans despite the history of our city. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. and his wife Coretta Scott King share a beautiful, though not perfect, love story that started here in Boston. Dr. King came to Boston in 1951 to attend Boston University's grad school, expecting to just be educated. Not one could have prepared him for what he would learn to experience outside the classroom in the streets of our city. Thanks to the diligence of Clennell King, we have a list of 20 addresses where the Kings share their story and experience Boston. We know that Dr. King was a regular at the Western Lunchbox on 417 Mass Ave and met Mrs. King at New England Conservatory. He extended 12 Baptist Church on 680 Shamet Ave where he became an assistant minister. Mrs. King herself attended New England Conservatory studying opera. She worked on the Urban League of Greater Boston on 22 Whittia Street. The couple's first home together was on 396 North Hampton Street. Dr. King returned to Boston and led march, a march of 22,000 people from Roxbury to the Boston Commons where the Embrace sculpture is erected. And he then said the words, "Now is the time to make real the promise of democracy. Now is the time to make brotherhood." The Kings' legacy and stories deserve to be remembered and honored through the establishment of King's Heritage Trail, where plaques of their footprints will be enshrined at each address. Mr. President, today, I'd like to suspend and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Brian Rurrell. Counsel Rurrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel, President Flynn, and thank you for, Counsel Anderson, for including me on this work. As you heard from, Counsel Anderson, as Boston is famous for its history, we have memorials, markers, trails, and tributes scattered throughout the downtown neighborhoods commemorating turning points in American history. Boston also has a long been home to Black activism, civil rights, leadership, and revolutions and race relations. Sadly, this history is often unknown even by our own resident, and emphasizing this history will help build community pride, will help teach our children that Boston's rich history is not simply that of segregation and disinvestment, but one of resilience and resistance. And in doing so, we will help to open neighborhoods to residents and tourists alike, supporting Black-owned businesses throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rurrell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Luizhen. Counsel Luizhen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. I am so excited by this resolution. I was a tour guide as my first job when I was 14, giving walking tours of Lower Roxbury and the South End, you know, through my town, the brainchild of Dr. Carolyn Crockett, advised by the great Mel King. And so, one of the stops on the tour is MLK's home on Mass Avenue, and it is one of the ways that we start the tour, although I gave this tour when I was younger, I can still give the tour, I gave the tour two years ago. And it's just really great that we can tell the story of Dr. King and Coretta, of their love story here, and I also love how that's been folded into the Embrace. Mass Design Group, the architecture firm behind the Embrace, was actually led and started, which was the Black architect behind the Embrace, they actually have a mapping out of all of these significant places. So, I think there's going to be a really great partnership in building out what this trail looks like. As Counsel Rurrell stated, there's so much rich Black history in this city, and we have so many oral historians, we have so many griots, we have so many people living, people in their 70s, and also younger people who are giving these walking tours still of our neighborhoods that we deserve to elevate, and this can be a walking tour that we offer here in the city, and that should be, have the proper markers. Recently, my staff and our families went on the Black Heritage Trail in Beacon Hill. Shout out to the National Park Service, they have a great self-guided virtual tour of the Black Heritage Trail that is an amazing empowering tour that tells the story of those who really fought to make sure that Black folks in Boston, Black folks coming to Boston could really experience and realize freedom even in light of the Fugitive Slave Act and all the other barriers to true freedom. And Counsel Bock joined us on that tour, and I called her and said, "We're right outside of your house in Beacon Hill on this tour," and she added, "Some really great rich history." So, I'm excited about this and about really shining a light on the rich history of Dr. King and Coretta, but also of the great Black history that we have throughout the city that really deserves to be told and celebrated. So, thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, and I look forward to working on this with you.
Thank you, Counsel Luizhen. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock. Counsel Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Yes, I am also enthusiastic, please add my name, sponsor of this. I immediately went to check the list to make sure One Chestnut Street was on it, the house that Coretta Scott King lived in on Beacon Hill. I think it's long bothered me that there isn't like a marker there, and I think that, you know, Boston actually piloted in the Freedom Trail, kind of the use of a trail as a way to really drive like economic spending, tourist attention, et cetera, and honestly, like people around the world have copied us and the thing that we created with the Freedom Trail. But the challenge really now, if you think about the Freedom Trails coming in around the bicentennial, the challenge now, 50 years on, is how do you like push that kind of engagement with history out into our neighborhoods and really make it citywide? And the King's story is such an important story for us locally here and for the whole country, and absolutely should be something that people are coming to Boston to like walk in the footsteps of. So, really excited about this, and I think that these kinds of efforts can actually really help like pull the threads together and drive attention and resources and also just be a great day out in America's walking city as we enjoyed with the Black Heritage Trail a couple weekends ago with Counsel Luizhen. So, please add my name, and thank you to the sponsors.
Thank you, Counsel Bock. The Chair recognizes Counselora. Counselora, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I will be brief because I don't want to belabor the point. I think everybody has talked about the importance of this trail, but tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., the Environmental Justice Resiliency and Parks Committee is having a meeting about making the Walking City Trail an official trail of the City of Boston, and although we are going to be talking about that specific trail and signage, part of the hearing order is to attempt to create a program and an office that would be focused on specifically creating urban trails and unifying urban trails through a civic engagement process process all across the city. And so, to see the birth of new trails in the city that will ultimately add to the trails that already exist, like the Harbor Walk, the Black Heritage Trail, it is really affirming for me that we're kind of moving in that direction, where people in the city of Boston can decide what are the important places in their community, what are the, how do they want to highlight these places, and that we can have infrastructure in the city to really make that happen. And so, I'm really excited to see this, and my hope is that we can see the upcoming and the popping up of multiple urban trails in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. I will speak on this as well. I also wanted to highlight one of my colleagues, who mentioned Representative Mel King, and just recently, myself and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson and my colleagues here in the City Council supported a resolution to rename a public school after Representative Mel King as well, and that will be taking place shortly, it was actually going to be this week. I reference that also because of the important role the historic 12 Baptist Church plays in our city, where Dr. Martin Luther King preached when he was here in Boston. And another remarkable pastor was Reverend Michael Haines, that many of us here have met, and we know Reverend Michael Haines's commitment as well. So during these difficult times, we're also honored to know that Rep. Mel King and Reverend Haines played a critical part in bringing the city together. Let me recognize Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to shout out to the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., which Dr. King was a proud member of by way of Sigma Chapter, as well as Sister Coretta Scott King was a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. Shout out to those sororities and fraternities. And again, asking to suspend the rules and pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Please raise your hand to sign on. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bock, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Murphy. Please add the Chair. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0461. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket 0461. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock.
Aye.
Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mehir. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0461 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. That docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 0462, please.
Docket number 0462. Counselors Murphy and Flynn offer the following. Resolution recognizing Irish-American Heritage Month.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn, and I ask that we suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Flaherty, if that's okay.
Hearing no objection, Counsel Flaherty is added. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. Over the last two centuries, Irish immigrants have made great contributions to our city and country, while generations of Irish-American residents have enriched all aspects of our city and our nation's history. And during this month, which started today, March 1st, we celebrate and honor the remarkable achievements and contributions of Irish-Americans. Their resiliency and perseverance, commitment to social and economic justice, strong sense of community, and proud immigrant heritage have helped shape our city and our nation's identity and made us a stronger people. So we're asking that the Boston City Council recognizes March as Irish-American Heritage Month in the city of Boston and pays tribute to the wonderful contributions of the Irish-American community. In recognition of Irish-American Heritage Month, the Boston City Council orders, seems like a strong word, so I'd like to say, just asks nicely to the property management department to raise the flag on March 17th, 2023. Thank you, Counsel President Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank the lead sponsor for including me. Obviously, the contributions are immeasurable despite many difficult circumstances as our ancestors coming over here, and we're met also with prejudice and discrimination, and no Irish need apply. And so, for a very resilient group and persevered through tough times, and again, have made great contributions to the city, to our country, and to our world. So that's it. Look forward to celebrating with all of my colleagues. We're all Irish for the month of March, just so you know, so we're plenty of green. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. When I enter, I'll like to speak on this matter. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do come from the island of Ireland, and very proudly so. I want to thank Counsel Murphy and Counsel Flynn for offering this resolution to recognize Irish-American Heritage Month. You know, it's interesting, we have a long and storied history in Boston. I think it predates the 1840s. The Charitable Irish Society of Boston was founded in 1737 and is the oldest Irish organization in North America. Its early charitable efforts focused around temporary loans and assistance for finding work for Irish immigrants, very much similar to the organizations that are supporting other immigrants from other countries, finding a foothold in Boston, getting them started and getting them established. I know this is a tradition in the Haitian community and others. The Irish immigrants have landed on these shores for centuries and forced to leave their homelands, homeland for economic deprivation, political persecution, and just seeking a better life in a new country. I want to recognize the spiritual support provided by the Irish Pastoral Center for seniors who emigrated from Ireland in the 1950s and 60s. Many, when you go and have tea with them and talk with them, they came here, many of them came to work in the health, as healthcare assistants, personal care assistants, and LPNs. Many of them came from the west of Ireland. English was not their first language, and they made an immeasurable contribution to our communities here in Boston. And they also want to recognize the work in a more contemporary context of the Irish International Immigration Center, formerly the Irish Immigrant Center, that offers job training, immigrant legal assistance, and English language classes to immigrants from all over the world. And I'm very excited and proud to celebrate Irish Heritage Month in Boston. And also, a little bit of trivia for you. I have the Irish flag in our office, actually. If you need a flag to run up the pole, it's, Matt O'Malley gave it to me as he walked out the door. So the Irish tricolor, the tri-color, as it's called, green, white, and orange, was first made in 1848. It represents, the green represents Catholics, the orange represents Irish Protestants, and the white color stands for the harmony and conquer, concord that both parties were hoping to achieve in 1848. So I hope we have a grand time celebrating and blessing the Shamrock and having a glass of the black stuff, and happy St. Patrick's Day. We will celebrate that in two weeks' time, but happy Irish-American Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just want to rise to thank the makers for bringing this forward. Charleston is the oldest neighborhood in Boston. It's largely forgotten about as being a major enclave of Irish-Americans here in the city of Boston, and I have to thank all of them for welcoming the sixty girl over the bridge, over the Charleston Bridge is what I'll call it today as I'm giving my remarks, but just have to give a shout out to the Donovan's, the Colliers, the Calians, the Fitzpatrick's, the Walshes, the Kelly's, all incredible families who have really made their mark in this city and who have lifted each other up without the help of other neighborhoods and in their minds, largely without help of the city over the last couple of years. And so, I just wanted to rise and lend my support and look forward to celebrating St. Patrick's Day here in the city of Boston with everybody, and especially those here in Charleston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the original sponsor, Counsel Murphy. I rise in support to this resolution, and it is important for all people to recognize and celebrate their heritage. Everyone in America, whether born here or brought here by a central heritage, that shape who they are today and their identity. Recognizing struggles, stories, successes, is the best way to honor a heritage, and each story should even be taught in schools. Moreover, it's our duties as Irish-Americans, Italian-Americans, German-Americans, Scottish-Americans, British-Americans, or all European-Americans and African-Americans for us to uplift each other and continue to honor each other in our heritage. Boston has a strong Irish-American community, and they should be celebrated and their heritage be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jean. Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to the makers. I rise just also to celebrate Irish-American Heritage Month. Counsel Flaherty, I've saved all my greens, so looking forward to it. I think that there's a lot of connectedness between the struggles of Irish immigrants, obviously, and Black immigrants when they came, and you can see that now with Counsel Braden alluded to, or mentioned, the Rean Center, which has been as aggressive on fighting Title 42 and the Biden administration and the racism and the xenophobia embedded in our immigration policy. So there's a lot of camaraderie and a lot of synergy there in our fights and in realizing that we are stronger when we work together. I have the pleasure, of course, I grew up in Boston, of having a number of friends teach me about Irish history and culture, and I've had the pleasure of traveling to Ireland, and I look forward to going back to learning so much more. I count it a credit to the city that we have such diversity and that our neighborhoods often tell the story of our changing demographics, but of, you know, this was a place where the Irish lived, and that's where the Jewish communities came, and the Black communities came, and those neighborhoods still carrying those stories. So I look forward to us being able to be in shared spaces more where we find those shared stories of solidarity and continue to think about how we can work together, whether it's on immigration issues or on housing issues or the issues that face all of our communities and the things that bring us together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'm excited to stand in support of this. Please add my name. And to Counsel Flaherty's invitation, have absolutely no qualms with being Irish in the month of March because the Irish people, Irish immigrants, and people in Ireland have been a very big part of my own political development and my own work in social justice. They have taught me a lot. It was actually one of the Irish centers here in Boston that hosted myself and Bob Moses when I was very young to have a conversation about racial justice in Boston public schools, and I got to have a talk with one of my heroes thanks to the work, the social justice work of the Irish center here in the city of Boston. Obviously, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Ireland's socialist history and a lot of the work that they've done, and for me, I've learned a lot from socialist feminist movements in Ireland. And Ireland, I was also welcomed to Frederick Douglass there and a lot of other Black leaders to really have conversations around not only the abolition of slavery, but Black liberation in the United States and how they could be supportive. And so, I think to Counsel Louie Jean's point, we have a long history of working together, particularly for Black liberation and the liberation and justice of Irish people. So as someone who represents West Roxbury, who has a very, very long line of old Irish here in Boston, I'm really excited to celebrate in March and hope that we're having more conversations about how much we have in common during that time. Thank you.
And thank you, Counsel Lara. Let me also add, I'm honored to be part of this resolution in proclaiming March in honor of the Irish community here in Boston, but also, when I think of the Irish community in the United States, I think my first thought is with the famine that happened 150 years ago. We celebrated, we recognized it here at the City Council, but that's the first thing that pops up to my mind when I think of the Irish community and how they left, and they called them coffin ships out of town, coming to America, where many more died because of the potato bite in Ireland. But I think that's where the Irish get their commitment to social and economic justice. Counsel Arroyo and others were talking about food access today, and I think that's where the Irish really are champions of social and economic justice in those without food, those without water, those without a house, and that goes all the way back to the famine times. So thank you to all my colleagues for the incredible work they're doing in representing the rights of all immigrants, really. Please raise your hand if you'd like to be added to this. Mr. Chair, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bock, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louie Jean, Yeah. Counsel Murphy and Counsel Flynn seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0462. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0464, please.
Docket number 0464. Counsel Murphy offer the following. Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding Boston Public Schools' transportation follow-up on a previous request.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. I have to start by saying I never thought I would be filing so many 17Fs on the council. It hurts a little, but after advocating for several families who are struggling with different issues in BPS, I got a call from the mayor's office a couple of weeks ago telling me I should call the State Ethics Commission to ensure I'm not violating Section 23. A few days later, I was told by Claire in IGR that I was not allowed to work with Annie or Liz in our BPS Intergovernmental Relations Department any longer and needed to ask everything through her. Unfortunately, many of my questions and data requests are still not answered, so I feel forced to use our tool through 17F to get the data I need, our office needs to continue working on the supports we need for our residents. I do just want to add, providing constituent services has always been part of what elected politicians are supposed to do. The City of Boston Charter states, "The City Council serves as a link between the citizens of Boston and their municipal government. Counselors help constituents by connecting them to resources, services, and city departments. They serve as advocates for all Bostonians. Through their work, city counselors make sure Boston continues to be a great place to live, work, and play." So making sure I am doing my job, I am asking for this information again. We are aware that on-time AM bus arrival data that BPS submits to DESI omits a large portion of data for planned arrival routes. Twenty-five percent of our routes are missing data. I am requesting that 75% of the data that BPS does share, we request the following information, which was based on my previous 17F that I'm still trying to get some more clarification on. The number of students each day that did not get picked up by their assigned school bus, the number of times a backup bus was needed to be sent out. We calculated that on average, 51.7 students are on uncovered buses each day, and an average of 5.6 students per day have a backup bus sent to them. This means the Boston Public Schools does not pick up 46.1 students per day via the bus that is assigned to transport them to school safely and on time. Many of these students arrive very late or not make it to school at all. A high percentage of students assigned to school buses are on IEPs, which means many of our special education students are missing critical specialized services and therapies. We are still waiting, my office is still waiting on responses to the following questions, and despite BPS telling us that they do not have data on bus student arrival times available by student or by school, we know that BPS utilizes Aspen, which is the district's student information tracking system, and each school is required to record apps- information tracking system, and each school is required to record absences in time of tardies for each student each day. I know this firsthand also for over 20 years. I took attendance every morning, and any time a student arrived past the morning attendance time, you did have to record exactly what time they arrived at school. So the two questions are: one, the actual time the student arrived at school if their bus was late, a backup bus was sent, or if the bus did not pick them up at all; the number of students across the system this happens to on a daily basis since September 9th, 2022; and the number of students by school this happens to on a daily basis, so by school and by system. And the second question is, how many of these students miss an entire day of school because of their unreliable bus system? And I would like the numbers for students across the system since the first day of school this year and the number of students by school. So I'm requesting that the Boston Public School through the mayor provide any and all information that is available regarding this matter. Thank you, Counsel President Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 0464. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docet has passed. We're onto personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0465.
Docet number 0465. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 0465. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docet has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0466.
Docet number 0466. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 0466. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docet has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0467.
Docet number 0467. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 0467. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
On the agenda.
We'll take a quick recess. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0467.
Docet number 0467. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 0467. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docet has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0468.
Docet number 0468. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Flaherty.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 0468. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docet has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0469.
Docet number 0469. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 0469. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docet has passed. We're onto late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are, I think, 10. I think there are 10 additional late file matters. The additional late file matters include two appointment letters from the mayor, absent letter from Counsel Mejia, at least four personnel orders, a resolution for myself and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Mr. Clerk, there was one other one?
Two 17Fs.
There were two other 17Fs from Counsel Murphy. I'm going to stop for a second to make sure everyone has these late file matters on their desk. You don't have the Mejia letter?
I have Mejia. I have that.
I will get everyone the Counsel Mejia letter. Yep. Can we please ensure everyone has both 17Fs, please? Ron is in the process of passing it out now. Thank you, Ron. Now, does everybody have the proper documents before them? I'm getting a couple thumbs up, which I take as a yes. We'll take a vote to add these items into the formal agenda. All those in favor of adding all of these late file matters into the agenda, say aye. Aye. Thank you. These late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, in the interest of time with some of our guests, could I go to the first late file matter, which is an order resolution for myself and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson?
Order offered by Counselors Ed Flynn and Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, resolution in support of Boston Firefighters Local 718 in urging the Massachusetts Civil Service Human Resources Division to work in good faith on the issue of civil service promotional exams.
President Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, may we suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Louie Jen?
Seeing and hearing no objection, Counsel Louie Jen is added.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. I want to acknowledge the professional membership from Local 718 that is here with us today: Sam Dillon, Leroy Hayward, and my neighbor in South Boston, Leo Greeley. This resolution is in support of Boston Firefighters Local 718, who are working with the Massachusetts Civil Service Human Resources Division on this issue of civil service promotional exams. I want to say thank you to the important work of Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. The firefighter's promotional exam has long been used for promotion of firefighters and selection of leadership within the fire department. And many fire departments prepare for months or even a year for this exam. The city of Boston is unique in its infrastructure, and the Boston Fire Department is thus unique in its operation, and the exam has included Boston-specific content. Yet, the Massachusetts Civil Service Human Resources Division is now looking to remove Boston-specific content from the exam, with the reasoning being that it would address concerns raised by a legal challenge regarding racially disparate treatment. However, including Boston-specific content does not impede efforts to promote fairness and equity in the promotion process, but rather it supports and furthers those efforts. The Boston Firefighters are now having issues working with the Civil Service Human Resource Division out of the state and is hoping that they will work with them in good faith. This resolution asks for the city council to support our firefighters and urge the Civil Service Human Resources Division to work with them as well in good faith. I did recognize my counsel colleagues, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson and Counsel Louie Jen, but all of you have been very helpful in support of this. But I also want to acknowledge Counsel Flaherty as well for the important work you have done, Counsel Flaherty. But I hope we can suspend and adopt this today, and I'm looking forward to hearing from my colleagues as well. Thank you, Counsel Braden.
Thank you, President Flynn. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor President Flynn, thank you so much for adding me as a co-sponsor. I find that this is exceptionally important, and I think it's important for us to go on record in support of our firefighters in terms of how they're taking their exams. And here you see that this resolution definitely addresses that the changes already address the issues with increasing diversity in the fire department as well as just racially disparate treatment of the firefighters, of Black and Brown firefighters. So I am, of course, full support and, again, grateful for being added as a co-sponsor and look forward to your vote today for us to support our firefighters. Thank you so much.
Counsel Louie Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden, and thank you to Counselors Flynn, Counsel President Flynn and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. I rise in support and acknowledgement of the incredible work of our firefighters, a lot who have been in limbo because of the actions and the inactions of the state that has really sowed confusion. There's a legal decision, Tatum, that really addressed what we know is the racially disparate treatment of a lot of folks in the civil service process. This is, and this is to combat, not that, it is to support the Tatum decision and its call to really acknowledge and dismantle a lot of the racial discrimination that folks face in the process. But this is about making sure that the questions within the new format are Boston-specific, which I think is a reasonable ask from our firefighters to also bake some certainty in the process. Folks who have been preparing and are ready to move up in the department deserve to have questions that pertain to Boston and Boston experiences and not other states or scenarios that have nothing to do with the city or what it is like to be a firefighter in the city, which a lot of the questions right now, wouldn't be relevant to what it's actually like or what the materials are or what a fire truck is equipped with. A lot of that has nothing to do with what Boston firefighters actually have. And so this is a reasonable request, and I think the state really needs to do a good job of providing some predictability for our firefighters. And so in support of this resolution and the work that we can do on the council to really, what I think should be a pretty simple fix that we can get us there and help get them there. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jen. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Counsel Arroyo, and then Counsel Baker. Counsel Arroyo first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to also note that it's not just a matter of the subject matter not being related to the way that Boston firefighters do their job, but that some of the answers that would be considered correct with this new format are actually wrong in Boston. So to get the answer correct on this promotional exam, you would actually have to put the wrong answer in for Boston, and I think that by itself sort of speaks for itself. We shouldn't be creating a promotional exam in which you get extra credit points or you get the right answer because you got the actual wrong answer in practice. And so hopefully, the state does something on this. I know that we're coming up on a deadline in March, and so this has my full support, and I hope to see the state take action on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we all know, the Boston Fire Department is, I believe, the first and the best in the nation. And what makes them different, one of the glaring differences is the fact that we, they proactively fight because we're in a dense area. If you're in Pittsfield or Roethob or someplace like that, you're fighting a fire that's a farmhouse, they're just going to fight from the outside and let the building burn down. We're unable to do that here because of the densely packed buildings that we have, and if you just let it go, then more buildings will catch on fire. And Bellflower Street comes to mind for me. Bellflower Street's in the Polars Triangle in my neighborhood. I think in, it was the '60s, '68, '69, there were something like eight to 10 three-deckers that went on fire. We lost almost half the street in that one fire, and that's why the Boston Fire Department, when there is a fire, they proactively fight. They try and stop that fire in the building to contain instead of just having the convenience to stay outside and fight it from the outside. So that's one big difference. If you're sat with a firefighter that'd be able to tell you 20 differences, that's one big difference that I know of and wanted to just bring that to people's attention, and I will be in support of this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lara, you have the floor. I beg your pardon, I'm missing people here. Go ahead, go ahead. Counsel Coletta is next.
Thank you so much, Counsel Braden. I just want to join the chorus of support for this resolution. I want to start off by commending the incredible work and advocacy of the 718's new president, Sam Dillon, in his short time in leadership. I think that this is exactly the kind of work that we want to support and we want to advocate for our firefighters in the city. Please add my name, and I'm happy to vote in support of this resolution today.
Thank you. Counsel Coletta?
Thank you so much, Counsel Braden. I rise to lend my formal support to our firefighters, as I said that I would and happily do. If you've ever been on the scene at a fire, you understand and see firsthand just how brave and courageous these individuals are. These men and women really are the superheroes among us. And so, of course, we welcome the changes from the Tatum decision, although, as Counsel Arroyo mentioned, it is incredibly confusing to have a question on an exam that is incorrect for Boston. And so I join the chorus in just calling for some predictability and some clarity from the state. So please add my name to this resolution and always standing with our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to add their names? Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker? I beg your pardon. Sorry, I should have put my glasses on. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be brief, what we're looking at is changing the rules in the middle of the game. Boston firefighters signed up to take the test after working hard, paid a fee, studied extremely hard, and now, you know, the state's HR is trying to, I guess, change the rules in the middle of the game. So we're looking for an expedited process and have that test as scheduled. I believe it's the end of the month, if I'm not mistaken.
March 25th.
March 25th. Have that exam held on March 25th. And for those that don't know how that works, those that have already signed up for the exam, the longer that the exam is put up, it allows others that, right now, do not qualify for the exam because they're relatively new on the job, then they'll be able to qualify for the next test, which expands the pool, which is not fair to those that are currently on the job, they've got experience, and they've studied for the exam. And so you've got all these moving parts that are just not fair and frankly, will subject the state to multiple lawsuits. For those that are currently in the queue to take the test, to continue to prejudice them will just cause more litigation. It won't solve the problem, what we're looking to do, which is we want to put a test that's fair, that's balanced, but also understands the city, the rules of the city, and also brings in and fosters the diversity that we need on the department. So they're accomplishing nothing by delaying this exam and by not giving the members of 718 a seat at the table to at least advance the Boston questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Okay, who would like to add their name? Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bar, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Murphy, and please add my name. Counselor, President Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this...
Resolution.
Resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against, nay? Mr. Clerk, would you please take a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on resolution regarding civil service exams. Counsel Felix Arroyo. I mean, sorry, Counsel Arroyo. I had a flashback. I was here. That's right. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bar?
Aye.
Counsel Bar, aye. Counsel Braden?
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Orell. This first late file receives 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This resolution has passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden, and thank you to the dedicated and professional Boston Fire Department that we have. Mr. Clerk, do you want to go through the late, do you want to go through the personnel orders now? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can you read the late file matter into the record regarding a letter from Counsel Mejia?
From the Office of City Counsel Julia Mejia. Dear Counsel President Flynn, I am writing to inform you of my absence today at the city council meeting. A representative from my staff will be listening in and following up with me. I will thoroughly review the video in meeting minutes. I ask you that you please read this matter into the public record. Thank you, Counsel Mejia.
That will be placed on file. That will be placed on file. Yeah, okay. Mr. Clerk, we have two appointment letters from the mayor. Could you please read those into the record?
From the Office of Michelle Wu. Dear Clerk, Judge, and Siam, in accordance with provisions of Section 5-5.10 of the City of Boston Municipal Code, I hereby appoint Paul Chung of West Roxbury as the registrar of the City of Boston effective January 23, 2023. And the second appointment letter, in accordance with provisions of Section 5-5.10 of the City of Boston Municipal Code, I hereby appoint John Borders of Rosendale as Director of Tourism, Sports, and Entertainment for the City of Boston effective January 23, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Those will be placed on file. The next late file matters into the record?
Personnel.
Which are personnel orders, please.
First personnel order by Council Flynn for Council Worrell.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Council Flynn for Council Worrell.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Council Flynn for Council Louie Jean.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed.
And Council Flynn for Council Frances Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This late file matter has passed. The next late file matter, Mr. Clerk?
Offered by City Councilor Erin Murphy, a request for Section 17F regarding the Boston Public Schools.
Those are two 17Fs? Do you want? Yeah, please read both of those together, Mr. Clerk.
The second 17F offered by Councilor Erin Murphy regarding breakdown of data collected through the Boston Public Schools Office of Equity.
Okay.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Council Murphy on both of those 17F late file matters.
Thank you, and I just want to apologize to my colleagues for these late files, but I was waiting on this information and still haven't received it after 10:00 on Monday, so I will be brief. I filed hearing order docket 0341 on February 1st to address concerns that many of our BTU members were still waiting on retro pay. That was changes made to the contract, so they were still waiting on that pay. And then two weeks later, I started getting calls from several BTU members concerned because an email they received on 2/16. So on February 16, 2023, an email was sent from Natasha Charles at Boston Public Schools to some of our Boston Teachers Union members informing them that an overpayment was made on check issued 2/3/2023 due to a system processing error and that they now owe BPS money back. So the same teachers who were waiting for back pay then received an email that they owed money back. So on February 21, 2023, I put in an email, I had made a few calls before that and had spoken also to Jessica Tang at the BTU, but on February 21, 2023, nine days ago, I emailed Claire Kelly in IGR asking specific questions so I could have clarification and support the teachers and other BTU members that had reached out concerned. These questions have still not been answered, so I'm filing a 17F to help ensure that I receive the information so I can properly support our teachers. Those questions are: How many BTU members received the email I copied below? The email states, "Subject: ELT Memo." ELT is an acronym for Extended Learning Time. Hello all, this email is to inform you of an overpayment due to a system processing error. You were overpaid on ELT on this check issued 2/3/2023. Payroll has corrected the discrepancy and communication will be sent out to each employee detailing the overpayment amount and options you have for repayment. So my questions are: How many BTU members received the email? How many BTU members were overpaid and now need to pay back the difference? What payback options are being offered to those affected by this error? And what is the total dollar amount of overpayment made by BPS? So that is my first 17F. My second 17F, I've requested on several occasions a breakdown of the data collected through the BPS Office of Equity, which investigates allegations of possible violations of EQT-3, which defines sexual misconduct broadly as any sexual inappropriate comments and/or behaviors of any kind. The superintendent circular EQT-3 and the related protocols are consistent with the district's obligation to investigate and address all allegations of sexual misconduct, including possible sexual harassment under state and federal law. Sexual violence may include criminal acts such as indecent assault and battery, rape, abuse, or assault with intent to rape. Any acts that may be criminal will be referred to law enforcement. The examples that BPS uses in this circular are unwelcoming sexual touching, non-conceivable sexual conduct that occurs during school or non-school hours on or off school grounds, including dating violence, recruiting, transporting, obtaining, or providing a student of any gender for the purpose of sex. The total number of sexual violence allegations reported in school year 2021, 2022 were 32. In so far this school year, 2022, 2023, there have been 13. Sexual misconduct includes unwelcome conduct of a sexual nature that denies or limits on the basis of sex a student's ability to participate in or to receive benefits, services, or opportunities in the school program or activities. Sexual misconduct, depending upon the totality of the circumstances, the ages of the student or other individuals involved, and the severity and pervasiveness of the conduct, include but are not limited to sexual advances whether or not they involve touching, requests for sexual favors, making an educational decision or benefit contingent upon a student's submission to unwelcome sexual conduct, offensive public sexual display of affection including groping, fondling, gestures, or inappropriate touching of oneself or others, consensual groping, fondling, sexual touching or sex on school property or at any school-sponsored activity, sexual jokes or references, comments regarding a student's body or a student's sexual activity or orientation, offensive name-calling or profanity that is sexually suggestive, sexually degrading, or based on sexual stereotypes or sexual orientation, different treatment because of pregnancy status, displaying or distributing sexually explicit drawings, pictures, or other materials in any form such as sexting, trafficking of youth for sexual purposes such as recruiting, transporting, or otherwise exploiting a minor in exchange for money, shelter, or food, sexual advances or contact whether or not they are consensual between a student and an employee, contractor, or community partner, sexual activity between students in a school or any building where BPS business is conducted, and other verbal, nonverbal, or physical conduct of a sexual nature. I took the time to read all of them, which we can all access if we go on to the superintendent circular EQT-3, because I do think it's important to know that for any teacher, school administrator, nurse, any mandated reporter, which I was and continue to be, to feel that any behavior has risen to the level that they needed to fill out this specific form, that is, it's disturbing to me because many, I feel, are disregarding the severity of any of these types of misbehavior to our students or other colleagues. So the total number of sexual misconduct allegations reported in school year 2021, 2022 were 712. And so far this school year, 2022, 2023, there have been 525. If we go with the math, we will be ending the year if it continues over 1,000 this school year alone. I'm requesting, again, the breakdown of these allegations, not just the total number. I have attached the chart that I believe should help clear up any misunderstandings BPS has on the data I am requesting. Breakdown of data on the superintendent circular for both school years for those defined as sexual violence not considered sexual misconduct, and also those for both school years defined as sexual misconduct not considered sexual violence. And I have attached the chart to make sure. It's important, I think, to me, to make sure. They are saying that they just have a total number, but for any description, you have to write up a report, you have to say what happened, and when you're saying what happened and you're accusing a student of doing it, or a student is coming to you because they feel like they have been the victim, we have to make sure we're keeping both safe in this situation. So I am requesting that this data is broken down so we can really see what types of sexual misconducts are happening in our schools. The number, to me, is alarming. It may not be to everyone in the city, but to me, I think it's important also to get the information correct so there's no allegations of trying to make this bigger than it is. To me, it's a big deal. I'll continue to advocate to make sure all of our students are safe in school or at any school activity. So thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to file these late.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file docket, which is a 17F, the first one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This late file matter, which is a 17F, has been passed. The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late file matter, which is the second 17F from Council Murphy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter, 17F, has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're on to the next late file matter.
We're all done.
We're on to green sheets. Anyone wishing to take something out of the green sheets may do so at this time. I know Council Louie Jean and Council Baker both have something out of the green sheets. Let me go to Council Louie Jean first. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to pull docket number 0120, titled Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand the Amount of $160,000 in the form of a grant for the Immigrant Advancement Fund.
Thank you.
Oh, that's your job.
Yeah.
My bad. Sorry.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0120 into the record?
From the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement, docket number 0120. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $160,000 in the form of a grant from the Immigrant Advancement Fund awarded by the donor group to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement. The grant will fund programs, initiatives, events, and small grants that enable immigrants to play an active role in the economic, civic, social, and cultural life of the City of Boston.
Mr. Clerk, can you pull the committee to ensure that this docket is properly before the body?
The Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement, Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Mejia?
Yes.
Council Arroyo?
Yes.
Council Coletta?
Yes.
This docket, 0120, is now properly before the body. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Clerk. This grant would fund programs, initiatives, events, and offer mini-grants from Moya, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement, to help our immigrant communities play an active role in economic, civic, social, and cultural life in our city. Specifically, it will enable funding to support the mental health and wellness of our immigrant communities, such as initiatives for family wealth and health and wellness, and community cultural events during Immigrant Heritage Month in June. We continue to hear from our immigrant communities, our new arrivals, and long-established immigrant communities about a lot of the mental health challenges and the trauma that many of our immigrant communities are facing. And so I'm excited to get this money to Moya for them to think strategically about how to support our immigrant communities and with integration and also with addressing the mental health needs of our immigrants, especially our young people. So I ask for us to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, seek suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0120. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. We're on to the second matter from Council Baker. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to see if you can turn the heat up. Just kidding. Just kidding. I have, I have, Mr., I'll read the first one because there aren't different pages. I'm looking to pull docket 0216 from page nine, and then also pull dockets 0217, 0218, 0220, and 0221 from page 10.
Mr. Clerk, the dockets Council Baker mentioned, will you please read those into the record?
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0216. Message in order for the confirmation of the appointment Edward Brandonberg as a member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2026. Docket number 0217, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Andrew Shelborn as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2026. Docket number 0218, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ernest Custon as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2024. Docket number 0220, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Suliman Gajiri as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2024. And docket number 0221, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Dr. Angela Paige Cook as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, can you pull the committee to ensure that these dockets are properly before the body?
The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Council Baker?
Aye.
Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Brayden?
Yes.
Council Lara?
Yes.
And Council Flaherty?
These dockets are properly before the body. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I decided to move these forward. The chamber has been filled up with many important hearings, so I believe these are very much neighborhood-centric. Aberdeen, Aberdeen is in Brighton, and Highland Park is a newly formed district in Roxbury, I believe, and we want to allow these commissions to be able to do their business, so we're going to just move them forward today if this body sees to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. We'll do each docket individually. Council Baker moves for confirmation of docket 0216. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This appointment has been confirmed for docket 0216. Council Baker moves for confirmation of docket 0217. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The appointment has been confirmed for docket 0217. Council Baker moves for confirmation of docket 0218. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The appointment has been confirmed for docket 0218. Council Baker moves for the confirmation of docket 0220. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Appointment has been confirmed for docket 0220. Council Baker moves for the confirmation of docket 0221. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The appointment has been confirmed for docket 0221. Thank you, Council Baker. We're on to the consent agenda. I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Council Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I just wanted to see if I could be added as a yes for the fire resolution,
Mr. Clerk, could we revisit the resolution on the fire examination? And can we add Council Worrell as a yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Worrell. We're on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted. At this time, we're going to do memorials, and I would welcome my colleagues if they would like to talk individually about a particular person, a loved one, a friend, a family member, constituent, just hit your light and I'll call on you. But today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councilor Arroyo, Mariam Torres. For Councilor Arroyo and Council Louis Jean, Ramande Jean. For Council Baker, Flynn, Murphy, and Flaherty, Francis Daly. Teresa Pasetti. For Councilor Coletta, Carmen Patella. And Danny Festa. For Councilor Louis Jean, Carol Lawrence, the grandmother of the late Tyler Lawrence, mother of Remy Lawrence, beloved wife of Stan Lawrence. For Councilor Lara and Councilor Flynn, Reverend Rodney Daly. For Council Murphy, Carol Ann Moore. For Councilor Worrell, Diva Ayuso. For the entire council, Saint Anessie Filippi, Council Louis Jean's grandmother, Ryle Rhodes, local 327 business manager, Coffiners Union, Peter Wong. A moment of silence, please. At this time, I will recognize my colleagues. I'll start with Councilor Arroyo and go around if anyone would like to talk about a loved one that has recently passed away. The Chair recognizes Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I'll just brief on this. Medium Torres was a teacher on BPS, but also was a neighbor, and when I was growing up, was the neighbor who watched after me when my parents were busy doing all the things my parents were doing. And much of my early memories involved being at her home and having her cook me meals or take care of me as a young kid. And so, she was suffering from Alzheimer's late in her life and has passed. She leaves her children and her widow. She's someone who has been a treasure to many, many people. It was sad to watch her illness take her, and my deepest condolences to her family as they work through this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Worrell. I should have mentioned, on behalf of myself and Council Flaherty, Marie Butler, and Elaine Wallace as well. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple people, Peter Wong, of course, was a year younger than me, and Ryle Rhodes, a year older than me, just to make sure that we know and understand how precious life is. But I also stand to recognize March 3rd is my brother Ricky's 30th anniversary, where he died of a heroin overdose on March 3rd. It definitely changed my life, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the two gentlemen that died. Andrew McDonough was killed on L Street that June 13th. Malzol, Michael Mullin, was one of my childhood friends. He shot himself on December 7th, and then I lost my brother Ricky, which he actually called me on the phone and shot himself on the phone to me. It was quite traumatic. And then I lost my brother Ricky three months later on March 3rd. Those three deaths are together for me, etched on my heart. I actually wear them on a chain that I wear. And thank you for allowing me to bring my brother Ricky into the chamber here today, and Andrew, and Malzol, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I rise to give my condolences to two families in East Boston today, first of which being Carmen Pesciorello Patella. She was a beloved administrator at East Boston High School, a really good friend of my mother. My heart goes out to her two daughters, who I played softball with. She was a mainstay on the sidelines at Nois Park, and so I just wish them my thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. And then the second is Gaetano Danny Festa. He was an incredible human being that lived down the street from me, on Princeton Street. I had the honor of taking part in a sign unveiling recently this past summer with Commissioner Rob Santiago while he was still with us, and I'm incredibly grateful for that opportunity. But he is a World War II veteran. He married the love of his life in 1949, and married and settled on Princeton Street in East Boston. That's where a large part of his family still reside. And everybody that knows Danny knows him as somebody with a big heart, somebody who is Mr. Fix-It, and he welcomed everybody to East Boston, whether you were a resident of 100 years or somebody who just moved in yesterday. So I just rise to give my condolences to his family as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'd like to, I guess, honor the life of Brother Rashid, who passed away just three days ago. In the Islamic custom, we do a jenazah, which is a funeral, and it took place today. I am deeply sorry for that I was not able to attend to a good friend of mine, his sister, Sister Latifa. In Islam, we say, "From God we come, to God we return." And I pray that his sins are forgiven and all of his good deeds are accepted, and that God give him rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
I think, Mr. President, it would be remiss if we don't mention Marie Butler and Elaine Wallace, two pillars, two wonderful women from South Boston. Neighborhood won't be the same without both of them in the town, but wanted to note that their legacy is that they both raised great kids, both sets of family. All those kids have made tremendous contributions to the community, to our city and beyond, and so they have, you know, they did an amazing job. And anyone that you know and you bump into that knows the Butlers and or knows the Wallises, first thing they'll say is how wonderful their mother is, but they'll also note that how well their mothers and their parents did in raising those kids, and obviously grandkids, and in Marie's case, great-grandkids, and maybe even great-great-grandkids. But two great families, tremendous loss to the community and to the Butlers and the Wallises. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I often talk about my work as a member, as a street worker, as a member of Street Safe Boston, doing gang intervention and violence intervention work. It is some of the most rewarding work that I've done. It's also some of the most difficult work that I've done. And when you do violence intervention work, gang intervention work, and when you're particularly working with the young people who are involved, it is work that takes your heart with it. And you kind of got to put all of your elbow grease and work together to make what you need happen, for these young people to happen. And so, the reason why I rise today is because in the last two months, three black men, who I had the honor of serving with at Street Safe Boston, have passed away, all from health issues. So I just want to name Marcus Merritt, Gregory Burnett, and Reverend Rodney E. Daly, who we mentioned here today. The reason why I wanted to take a moment to speak on that is because black men, for the big part of the work that happens in the city around gun violence and gang violence and violence intervention, really take on the brunt of this work. And Governor, excuse me, not Governor, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley and our council colleague, Brian Worrell, do an incredible amount of work to really push the conversation forward about black men deserving to grow old. And we're seeing that these men are dying too early on, way before their time, and we're losing pillars of our community. And so, I just wanted to, one, affirm their work to make sure that we're supporting black and brown men in the city of Boston, so that they can age and grow old and care for themselves and their health, and really lift up the names of these three men, who I had the honor of really working in the trenches with to support so many young people to move their lives in a different direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. The Chair recognizes Council Louis Jean. Council Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of you know that last November, and I wrote this because I knew this would be hard, last November, my grandmother passed away, and for the safety of my family, we have not talked about it, but now I'm okay to talk about it. She passed away for health reasons at the age of 91. Because of the conditions in Haiti and the suddenness of her passing, I was not able to go to Haiti to bury her, and that will always leave a hole in my heart. My grandmother was a giant. She loved her babies and her grandbabies and her great-grandbabies. She knew the whole lot by name, even though she never met. Her laugh was infectious, and she laughed a lot. I don't remember seeing her cry until she lost her youngest child in the earthquake. The sounds of her pain still linger. She came to this cold city when I was younger to help raise my sisters and me, while my parents grinded it out in around-the-clock jobs. She took no nonsense. She shared with us her wisdom and love the way only a grandma can. Life was hard for her. She never went to school. She didn't know how to read or write. Half of the children she carried, she lost either during childbirth or really young. She suffered the injustices that face women in Haiti, but yet, like so many black women, she still made lemonade. She mothered a village, her biological children, kids not biologically her own, nieces, nephews, kids from the block, kids from church. She was the queen of her castle and her neighborhood. She was so giving. She taught me so much. Madame Louis was a giant. I think of her today, per se, of Women's History Month, because she was the greatest woman I've known, because grief is continual and messy, because during Black History Month, we honor the ancestors, and I've tried to honor her, because our community and people I know are also mourning the loss of grandmothers who are pillars of our families and our neighborhoods, such as Carol Lawrence, who I pray is reunited with her grandson and is at peace. When I graduated from Harvard Law School, I really wanted my grandmother to be there. That degree was for her and for all of those who've come before me. But by that point, she was done with this cold city and country, and her health preferred the stability and consistency of the sun. I saw her last in 2020, right before the pandemic, on my last trip to Haiti. I must now learn a Haiti without her, which will be hard. She was the only grandmother I've known, and I miss her. I hope to always hear her laugh, and I hope to always make her proud.
Thank you, Council Louis Jean. I would like to mention, not a person by name, but over the last two days, I was at a Disabled American Veterans Conference in DC, and the staggering number of veterans committing suicide, at one time was 25 a day, and now it's down to, now it's 21 or 20. I also want to think about and recommit ourselves to supporting our veterans who are recently returning home but dealing with so many mental health challenges, and the staggering number of veteran suicides, 21 a day throughout the country is unconscionable. So I want to think about those veterans and their families, although I don't know them per se, but I do know their sacrifice and commitment to our country. The Chair moves that when the city council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the above-mentioned individuals. And we are now scheduled to meet again in the Aynella Chamber on Wednesday, March 8th, at 12 noon before we adjourn. I want to say thank you to the city clerk and the clerks team. I want to say thank you to my city council colleagues and your staff, the city council central staff, and of course, our lovely stenographer as well. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.